Okay, I'm in.
All right, wonderful. Okay. It's 1:07 PM and I would like to call the January 6, 2022 Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Happy New Year, everyone. I am Amy Bergen, the Douglas County Clerk Treasurer, and I will be running the meeting until the first administrative agenda item where the board will elect a chair and a vice chair. First off, the pledge of allegiance, Patrick Cates, county manager, will you lead us?
Please join me in the pledge of our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners use timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the lights turn red, please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified as for possible actions. And closing public comment, it is requested that members of the public provide public comment on those agenda items that are identified as for possible actions when those agenda items are considered and not during opening public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. We will start with in-person public comment.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jim Jackson. My purpose here is for a follow-up on the meeting we had in our neighborhood on the first part of November regarding the flood control and the camping on the BLM land right on our property lines or fairly close to it. Our neighborhood was very pleased with the turnout from all the county officials that showed up and the BLM officials that showed up. We had a regular party going on. Most of the people in our neighborhood and some from around were there. At the end of the meeting, everybody felt very good about the response from everybody, that the problems that we were talking were really being taken to heart and that something was going to be done about them. But everything has a but. With the BLM folks, they were going to send me some maps that would tell us the area that they could restrict the camping in. They did do this almost the next week. I spread that around to our neighborhood, got everybody's feeling on it, came back to the BLM, Mr. Column, and sent it back to him saying the area that he had indicated in green that they could close to camping was perfectly available, what we would feel would be solving our problems. There's where the problem started. After that, we heard nothing. I sent several emails to Mr. Column to ask for a response. He had said that he would keep me informed as things were moving along, and I heard nothing and heard nothing. And I sent one on the 16th of December, the 29th, or the 16th of November, the 29th of November, the 24th of November, and the 16th of December. Still have not heard anything from him. At that point, I thought, well, maybe I'm getting nothing from them. So I sent Mr. Cates' office a couple of emails, and I haven't heard back yet on that. So in desperation, I sent the two commissioners that were there emails. I did hear back and everything. So what we're waiting for right now is a response from the BLM on are they going to restrict the camping or are they not going to restrict the camping? And all we're asking for is to get some response from these people. BLM was just kind of, we're feeling like they blew us off. And we don't, most of the neighbors now have asked, were they just playing us at the time, giving us the answers that we thought we would like to hear, or were they really going to do something? We don't know. And all we want to do is hear from them and see what's going on. So that's my purpose here is to just ask for the help to get the response. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
I agree with you. These ATVs and all that stuff out there are scourge. But that's a $5 billion a year business, and they have a strong lobby in Washington. That's what we're up against.
Well, the area that they had indicated had already been approved to be closed. It was just a matter of them doing it. One of the things that happened on New Year's Eve, somebody was riding their ATV down that area, shooting off fireworks as they were driving down the road. It was late at night. We didn't bother to call in because we figured by the time anybody got there, they'd been long gone because they were going like a bat out of you-know-what down the road. So what we don't want to have happen is come up to the 4th of July and have the people camping as close as they were this last year and setting off fireworks again. So that's our main concern. So it's just, we're just looking for a response. If the answer is no, we'll take a different tact. But right now, everything they said was yes, we can do this. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Molly Walts, CEO of Nevada Rural Counties RSVP Program. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. In your consent agenda, you have our grant application for the community grants. First, I wanted to thank you for the $3,600 that you awarded us last year. We used that money to physically move down into Douglas County. We are a senior organization. We offer nine different programs. As of February 1st, we'll be offering 10 different programs that help our seniors live independently and those with disabilities as well. So we were graciously given office space by the sheriff, and so we are, we do have a physical office at the Good Neighbor Program building. And so we are excited about that. We were able to do that with your community grant that you awarded us last year. So again, thank you for that. We do have a vehicle that is dedicated to Douglas County, so that vehicle is a van, and it's for disabled as well. It's wheelchair accessible, and we were able to park that at the building. We have the office and we have a field rep. Within the application, we were asking for a part-time employee. So I'm speaking now because the application is in, within your consent agenda, and if it doesn't get pulled, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here to answer any questions, and please give me a call. Our grant application is, we are going to be taking over the administrative role February 1st for the Good Neighbor Program here in Douglas County. Again, the partnership between us and the sheriff's office has been extremely successful. But I'm here to tell you that if we were, it's recommended that we get 37% of our ask, and I'm great, I'm extremely grateful for that. However, though, if you have any other opportunity for funding, please keep us in mind. We are looking for a part-time employee that would help run this program. I know all of you are aware of the Good Neighbor Program, but I just don't know that you, your program, this sheriff's program of the Good Neighbor Program, is actually spoken about statewide. It is our hope by the end of 2022 that we will be able to duplicate that service, this program in all rural counties, with Douglas County being the lead of this as well. Douglas County has such a pulse on your seniors because of this program. So I just am here to answer any questions that you might have about the grant if you decide to pull it from a consent agenda. Thank you. Yes.
And Marsha, I apologize. I can't see if there's more in-person public comment. If there isn't any, can we move on to Zoom?
Amy, can I make a comment?
Sure, cancer.
It's interesting, back when I was a freshman commissioner, I was sitting here making a comment about the difficulties that the county down here, particularly the supermarkets would have if I-80 were closed due to snow. And, and there was a lady in the audience who came up and excoriated me and called me a liar and everything else. Well, it's been interesting to see what happened this year with the snow and I-80 getting closed because if anybody went over to Rayleigh's, they were out of a lot of things. So anyway, it can happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marsha, do we have any Zoom public comment?
Thank you, Madam Clerk Treasurer, Marsha Johnson, for the record. We do have one person online who's indicating they would like to provide public comment. Mr. Slade, do you have opening public comment at this time?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and we'll start your time.
Dear Slade, at your January 21st meeting last year, Deputy DA Doug Ritchie explained the rules for public comment. He said, quote, "Under both NRS Chapter 241, which is in Nevada open meeting law, and the guidelines adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, public comment is restricted to those matters that are within the jurisdiction and control of the board. Therefore, public comment is limited to the policy issues the county commissioners have the ability to influence and control," unquote. He went on to say, "The board does not have jurisdiction or control over what people may or may not like. The board is focused on policies, not personalities, under the OML and the county's guidelines. Public comment must be related to policy decisions the board may collectively make," unquote. Mr. Ritchie's comments mentioned comments about campaign contributions, which were aimed directly at me. His comments about, also made comments about those who made comments on board members wearing hats or about the UN were aimed at other easily recognized individuals. In the last year, I have obeyed those guidelines and made no comments about campaign contributions or other issues outside the board's control. The rules for the public comment, of course, apply to everyone, the public, the board, and all county officials. Yet less than a month later, Doug Ritchie himself clearly violated all those rules by making public comment that was solely about the late Rush Limbaugh, who he called "a great voice for America." His comments were solely about a personality and not at all about any policy issue. His comments were completely on matters outside the jurisdiction and control of the board. My bringing this up is in no way related to Mr. Limbaugh, whom many people admire. It would be equally inappropriate, for instance, to speak in public comment about the late Betty White, John Madden, or Desmond Tutu. The point, as Deputy DA Ritchie reminded us, is that public comment may only address matters under the jurisdiction and control of the board. If you ignore that requirement from Mr. Ritchie, then how can you treat others differently? Perhaps that is why, for instance, in one three-minute public comment last month, we heard about artificial intelligence, nanobots, forced vaccines, 5G, the monetary system, and technological feudalism. All of those issues, needless to say, are beyond the board's control and hence should not be allowed. Likewise, any comments about our US senators, our governor, or our president, whether praise or insults, are not under the jurisdiction of the board and hence unsuitable for public comment. Deputy DA Ritchie, in his explanation of the rules for public comment, suggested that anyone who wished to address any issue that is not within the jurisdiction and control of the board should instead write a letter to the record courier. That is good advice, both for the public and for county officials. So who should enforce the letter and intent of the OML as regards public comment? In my opinion, it should be Deputy DA Ritchie himself. He is not only counsel to the board, but also the county expert on the OML. The chairman should also be responsible for enforcing the OML in this regard and all regards. The public expects the letter and intent of the rules to be followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Wes, did you have public comment?
I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm afraid to after that, but I did want to notify everyone that we lost a marvelous volunteer to Douglas County. Excuse me. Over, over New Year's, Bob Cook, who has been a volunteer for Douglas County for the Senior Center for the Wildlife Programs, and sat on many commissions and boards throughout the years, unfortunately slipped and fell and died as a result of his fall. And I would like, due to his numerous hours of service to Douglas County, I would think it appropriate if we would take a moment of silence in remembrance, remembrance of Mr. Bob Cook. If you would be so kind as to join me. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, do we have any more on Zoom public comment?
Thank you, Madam Clerk Treasurer, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have another person with their hand raised. Phil, do you have opening public comment?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and we'll start your time.
This is Phil Oliveri. And first of all, I want to address this to the county commissioners. Thank you for your continued support to listen to the residents of the O2. We appreciated your action on our concerns. Although we have submitted CCNRs for some of our neighborhoods, restriction commercial activity, namely VHRs, these CCNRs have been negated by the county. It's my understanding that a discussion and vote will occur today regarding a lawsuit settlement concerning the Douglas County VHR ordinance. It is our understanding that certain county officials are urging you to agree to this settlement. I am urging you to table this item until a separate commission meeting can be held to discuss this settlement in detail with all parties concerned, including the public, so we have a better understanding of what's at stake here and you have a better understanding of what we've been facing against. I do want to remind everyone that they have eliminated the vacation rental situation down in South Lake Tahoe, and that's just a stone's throw across the state line here. So we, in turn, are receiving a lot of the people that can't stay in Tahoe up here in the Nevada area. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Marsha, was that the last Zoom public comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Marsha Johnson, Madam Clerk Treasurer, sorry. Marsha Johnson, for the record, we do not have anyone else online who has public comment at this time, but we do have one person in chambers that would like to provide public comment. Is that okay?
That is fine.
Good afternoon. My name is Dana Meyer, and I am the person, I believe, that our county commissioner referred to as calling him a liar. That episode is still on YouTube as when he attacked me. What I had said is I had quoted him as saying that the shelves would be bare, not because there were holdups on 80 or 50, but because there was overdevelopment if the park program went through with 2,500 homes. It was nothing to do with being shelves empty because of what was happening with our problems with the snow that we had. I had a friend who couldn't get back home for two days. That was nothing to do with development. It was to do with the snow on the road. I, I would advise people to just take a look at that. I never called him a liar. That is not in my vocabulary. I grew up in a family. If I called my sister a liar, I would be in trouble. I could say she told a fib, but I could never call her a liar. That's how I was brought up. I never called him a liar. I did object to what he said, and then he had told me at that time, oh, that wasn't his idea. He just repeated it out of the paper that he had read. Please go back and look at that. When I was under attack, it was absolutely disgusting, and it is still on YouTube to this day, how he verbally abused and attacked me. So I would just like to make it straight. I never, ever called him a liar. So I would just like to make it straight, I never, ever called him a liar. Thank you. Dana Meyer.
Thank you. And just to confirm, Wes, was that the last public comment?
Marcia Johnson, for the record, I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for possible actions. Approval of the proposed agenda. The Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to items on the agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I would like for item number seven to be pulled and moved to the January 20th meeting, if that is possible. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Bergens?
Sir.
Mark Gardner, for the record. I wish to move for the approval of the agenda minus item seven, which will be moved to the January 20th meeting.
Thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Commissioner Tarkanian?
Yes, it was.
I apologize. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Gardner and a second by Commissioner Tarkanian. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved with item seven being moved to the January 20th Board of County Commissioners meeting with a five to zero vote. We'll move on to the approval of previous minutes for possible action. Discussion to approve the draft minutes of the November 29th, 2021 special meeting and December 2nd, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the previous minutes.
Second.
So I believe I have a motion by Commissioner Noah Sed and a second by Commissioner Ingles. Did I get that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, wonderful. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes are approved five to zero. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A through F.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the consent calendar for items A through F.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Rice and a second by Commissioner Ingles. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so the consent calendar is approved, five to zero. Okay, moving on to administrative agenda. Item one, the election of Chair and Vice Chair for possible action. Discussion on the election of a Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with NRS 244.070 and County Code 2.04.025.
Madam Chairman.
Can I have a little bit more to say before we move on to discussion? Is that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So for the purposes of a clean record, I'm going to recommend that the Board of Commissioners make two motions, one for the Chair and one for the Vice Chair. However, it is within your discretion to make one motion or two. I'll first ask for discussion, then I will open this up for public comment, I will close public comment, and ask for further discussion from the Commissioners, and then ask for a motion. So now, at this point, I'm going to open it up for a discussion among the Commissioners. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead.
Myself, I'm going to recommend that Chairman Ingles continue as the Chair. And he is a senior commissioner, having fought many hard battles in the interest of this county. His agenda has always been in the best interest of the county and the residents. He knows the backstory on all special interests and how it has affected the county. His leadership is exemplified by his being an Army Artillery Captain Combat Veteran, LAPD Reserve Officer, eight years in Hollywood Vice, first reserve LAPD history to receive the Medal of Valor. He understands our deputies are the tip of the spear and need the backing of the citizens, DA and judges. Chief Financial Officer for a large New York Stock Exchange company. His accomplishments as being a Chairman of this Board, he eliminated the BOCC meetings at the lake, saving the county $150,000 per year. He added two sheriff deputies to the budget. He put through legislation for a moratorium on vacation home rentals. Prior commissions have been kicking that one down the road for years. Brought forward golf course closure ordinance, established County Code Enforcement Department just initiated a nitrate buildup awareness in the Carson Valley, and supports the value and spirit of the master plan. He could have accomplished more if not for the fires last year. His agenda has always been what is best for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion from the Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I would like to suggest that we consider Mark Gardner to be Chair of this organization. He has proven himself to be a champion of the people. The leadership that he has shown, especially during and after the fires, has been commendable, and I think that it's time for a change of leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. We'll start with in-person public comment. Marcia, please tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't see any in-person public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk Treasurer, Marcia Johnson, for the record. It does not look like there's public comment in the chambers. If you would like to provide public comment on item number one online, please raise your No response, no public comment online.
Thank you. At this point, seeing no public comment in person or on Zoom, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commissioners for further discussion. If there's no further discussion, we can make a motion. Like I stated in the beginning of this item, it is a cleaner record if we take these as two separate motions, one for the Chair and one for the Vice Chair, however, it is at your discretion to do it in one motion. Do we have any discussion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, Commissioner Rice.
Madam Chairman, I would like to move that we select Mark Gardner as Chairman of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for the next year. Thank you.
Amy, can I interject?
Yes, Commissioner Tarkanian.
I just thought we had a chance for comments. Can I make a comment first?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Ritchie as we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. It's appropriate to have a second at this point, and then there's discussion on the motion that's on the floor. If there is no second, then the motion will die, but there will be discussion before the votes taken, Commissioner Tarkanian.
Ms. Bergens, Mark Gardner, for the record. It seems like it would be stupid for me not to second the motion to approve me, so at this time, I will second that motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Commissioner Gardner to be Chairman moving into the 2022 year. It was motioned by Commissioner Rice and seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Is there discussion? Commissioner Tarkanian?
Thank you. You know, my Bishop Burman High School math isn't hard to figure out that my vote's going to make a difference here, and I don't like to be in that position because I like working with everybody here. I've enjoyed the time Mr. Ingles has been our Chairman. He has, despite some of my lack of understanding or patience in some of the meetings, he's been very cordial and good with us, and I think he's done a nice job as a Chairman. I like Mark Gardner, I think he's done a very good job. I hate to be in this position. I guess my only thought is maybe we give somebody a different chance and we'll see how it goes. So, that being said, I guess I'm going to go and vote for Mark as Chairman.
Is there further discussion before I ask for the vote? Seeing none, I'll just repeat the motion. It is for Commissioner Gardner to be Chairperson for the 2022 year. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And those opposed?
Nay.
So at this point, I believe that we have a three to two vote with Commissioner Rice, Commissioner Gardner, and Commissioner Tarkanian saying aye, and Commissioner Ingles and Commissioner Noah Sed saying nay. Is that correct? Perhaps, Marcia, could you help? I apologize.
Marcia Johnson, for the record, that is correct.
Thank you. Moving on to electing a Vice Chair, do we have any discussion?
I would like to say one thing. The move to stop having our alternate meetings at the lake disenfranchised many, many people that live at the lake. I'm not sure that we should have every other meeting at the lake, but when we have agenda items that directly concern the lake, I think that we should be able to have a meeting at the lake, and I don't think that that is a waste of taxpayers' money at all.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Noah Sed.
With respect to meetings at the lake, it saves $150,000 a year, and there were times when the meeting held was probably more people on the Board than there was in the audience.
I'm going to interject, and I apologize, but I believe that this is off-topic and it could potentially be a violation of our meeting laws to continue with this conversation. Mr. Ritchie, if I'm out of place in saying that, please correct me.
Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office, I was just about to push my button.
I apologize for interjecting too soon. At this point, I think that we need to move on to discussion on a Vice Chair. Do we have any discussion, or does any -- do any of the Commissioners want to make a motion?
Ms. Bergens, Mark Gardner, for the record.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Since seeing no public comment either here or online, I presume, I would move for the appointment of an election of Wes Rice as Vice Chair for the year 2022.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Well, I'll echo Commissioner Gardner's feelings, and I would be remiss to myself if I did not second that motion, which I do.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gardner and a second by Commissioner Rice for Commissioner Rice to be Vice Chairman for the 2022 year. I'm going to -- do we have more discussion on that prior to me calling for the vote? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And again, I believe that we have a three to two vote in favor of Commissioner Rice being Vice Chair for the 2022 year. At this point, I'm going to turn it over.
Madam Chairman. Given the ruling by the DA, I would suggest or request that the comments made by Commissioner Rice and myself be stricken from the record.
Well, unfortunately, the record is everything that is said by anyone that speaks during the meeting, so we can't just strike them from the record. I understand, but that's not how the record works for Douglas County. If there's no further comments, I'm going to go ahead and request that we take approximately a 10-minute break so that we can rearrange the chairs for Chairman Gardner and Vice Chair Rice to take their seats at the correct places on the dais.
Recording stopped.
At this time, I did want to make a couple of comments before we get into item two. Once again, I thank my fellow commissioners for the trust they've placed in me this next year. I want to let the public know that we will work very hard to maintain openness and transparency in our county government, and I want to assure that the members of the public that we will be treating every member of the public with the dignity, respect, and civility that they deserve. With that being said, I want to tell you a little story here. A few years ago, I was in a planning commission meeting held at CVIC Hall, and I was unhappy with one of the comments that one of the planning commissioners had made. And so I got up to voice my opposition to that, and I named that individual personally. And the chairman at that time, Ms. Joetta Brown, reprimanded me immediately and indicated that that was out of order, that I was to address the chair and the chair only and not call out individual members of the planning commission, whether I took issue with that or not. And I immediately thanked her for that reprimand, and I thought that she was extremely appropriate in doing so. And I apologized to that body, to the individual, and to the chair for overstepping that bound. I would like to see this board continue with that type of presentation or expectation out of the public, that we certainly welcome your public comments, but we would ask that you be respectful of the dignity, be respectful and respect the dignity of the members of this board also in proceedings as well. So I would ask you to direct your comments to the chair versus the individual member of the board. If you take issue with something that they say or do, I think you should probably do that in private. So that's all I wanted to, that's all I wanted to say. So, thank you. And I would ask that our board also, once again, respect the dignity and civility and respect the members of the public as well. So anyways, with that being done, and in light of the fact that Mr. Rice is not in attendance, I understand he's a little bit under the weather, and so he's trying to recuperate in his home in South Lake Tahoe Township, I should say, I have asked Mr. Noah Sad to continue operating light systems, our timing systems for today's meeting, for the rest of the meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Noah Sad, for indulging us on that. Now, we will get into item two, the election of the chair of the Liquor Board for possible action. Discussion on the election of the chairman of the Douglas County Liquor Board in compliance with NRS 244.350. And I would remind the board that our esteemed Mr. Dan Coverley, our sheriff, is a member of the Liquor Board, so he will be involved in this vote as well. So we'll go to, as Ms. Bergens pointed out, we'll go to public comment first, both in chambers, and then we will go to public comment that's perhaps on Zoom and bring it back for a motion by the board. Yes, Mr. Ritchie?
Chairman, if I may, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. If you could read the formal title of the item in, it's item two for possible action.
What am I reading? I thought I read that. That's what I did. I thought I did that. For possible action, discussion on the election of the chairman of the Douglas County Liquor Board in compliance with NRS 244.350.
I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. So is there any public comment here in chambers? Since seeing no public comment, Marcia, is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to make public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Johnson, for the record, there is public comment online. Mr. Slade, do you have public comment on item number two?
I do. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please state your name, and we'll start your time.
Jim Slade. My comment is about the process by which public comment is taken. On the last agenda item, there were two separate items under consideration. The first was the selection of a chairman and the discussion of who would be chairman, and then it was, public comment was solicited for that. Separately, subsequently, you had a nomination for vice chairman. The clerk treasurer did not ask for public comment. I raised my hand nonetheless, hoping Ms. Johnson would notice that. She did, but she told me that public comment had already been taken on item number one, even though it was only taken on the election of chairman, not vice chairman. So I then emailed Ms. Johnson, Ms. Bergens, and Mr. Ritchie, saying I was very disappointed that public comment was not allowed, that I thought it was an open meeting violation. Now, none of them may have noticed I'd emailed them. I know they're all busy, but I would still like, with the chairman's permission, to make a brief comment on item number one. So I will continue. You can cut me off if you want to. My only comment was that as soon as Mr. Commissioner Rice started talking about having meetings at the lake, what immediately came to my mind, immediately, was that's an open meeting violation. That is not the topic for discussion. And when subsequent to that, Mr. Noah Sad chimed in as well, I went, well, the open meeting law just continues to be violated. I was pleased that our clerk treasurer was aware of that and interrupted to say that that was not on the agenda. To my mind, Mr. Ritchie, who said he was about to buzz in, should have buzzed in the minute that Mr. Rice started talking about that. This is an ongoing issue with what I talked about earlier, so I'm very disappointed in that. That should be nipped in the bud. Mr. Ritchie and the chairman are both responsible, in my mind, for making sure that that doesn't go any further than is obvious to most people. In regards to Commissioner Rice, I have also emailed him earlier this meeting. I don't know if you saw that email, but I wanted to say that I had no problem whatsoever with his commendation and eulogizing of Bob Cook. I think that's appropriate with a local resident who has served this county in many ways over many years. I appreciated that he brought it up. I don't think there was anything wrong with that. I think that is one of the few exceptions to the open meeting law that should be allowed. When it is a respected member of our community who has passed away, I thought that was completely appropriate, and so I commend him for that. I know Bob Cook. I've had many conversations with him. We haven't always agreed on issues, but I always have respected his viewpoint, and rest in peace, Bob Cook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade, for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marcia Johnson, for the record, we do have two callers online. I'll check to see if they have public comment. Caller with the last four digits of 4415, do you have public comment on item number two? Caller with the last four digits, 7102, do you have public comment on item number two? Caller 7102, do you have public comment on item number two?
I do not have public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 4415, do you have public comment on item number two? I'm sorry, we didn't hear you. Do you have public comment on item number two?
No.
No further public comment at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Since seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and a possible motion. Commissioners? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rice?
Since the sheriff is a member of the Liquor Board, and they are the ones that approve or disapprove recommendations to our board, it would seem logical to me that the sheriff should be the chairman of the Liquor Board. Unless he has an objection to it, I would like to move that we nominate the sheriff to be the chairman of the Liquor Board.
I saw, Mr. Rice, I saw Mr. Coverley shaking his head, but I will lean to him to see what he wants to do with this.
Commissioner Rice, I really appreciate the vote of confidence, but I think to keep continuity and to maybe add additional practice to the chairman, I think it's appropriate to have the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners just remain as the chairman of the Liquor Board, which I believe has been done in the past and is, seems to work very good, and the sheriff's office, and I personally would like that.
In light of that, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my nomination.
Okay. Well, we still need a motion.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I move that the chairman of the Board of Commissioners be appointed as the chair of the Liquor Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Sheriff Coverley, that the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners be also the chairman of the Liquor Board. Further discussion on that? Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that vote would go 6-0 if I read it right. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item number three, open meeting law training for presentation only, so we will not have public comment during this period. Training on Nevada's open meeting law by the District Attorney's Office, Mr. Doug Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman Gardner. Commissioner's Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I have a PowerPoint I've prepared, but you've probably all seen it more than once, so what I think I'll do is cover some main points, then open up for some questions and answers. I'd like to start with something that I think we're all familiar with. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The open meeting law is all about the consent of the governed. All public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that deliberations be conducted openly, and that's found in NRS 241.010, otherwise known as Nevada's open meeting law. I'll give you the quick rundown on what the open meeting law requires. A public body should not meet together as a quorum to discuss business unless at a public meeting has been properly noticed and the agenda has been published. To deliberate towards a decision or to take action on a matter, the board has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. For purposes of the open meeting law, it's not every, it's not every discussion or anything that may be said. The definition of a meeting is found in 241.0153A. It means a gathering of the members of the public body at which a quorum is present, again, whether in person or by means of electronic communication, to either deliberate toward a decision or to take action on any matter over which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. There was some discussion about public comment. Public comment is required twice during the meeting, and the public comment is required on those items that are within this jurisdiction and control of this body. It's required at the beginning of the meeting, before any business is conducted, and meeting law. I'll give you the quick rundown on what the open meeting law requires. A public body should not meet together as a quorum to discuss business unless at a public meeting has been properly noticed and the agenda has been published. To deliberate towards a decision or to take action on a matter, the board has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. For purposes of the open meeting law, it's not every discussion or anything that may be said. The definition of a meeting is found in 241.0153A. It means a gathering of the members of the public body at which a quorum is present, again, whether in person or by means of electronic communication, to either deliberate toward a decision or to take action on any matter over which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. There was some discussion about public comment. Public comment is required twice during the meeting, and the public comment is required on those items that are within this jurisdiction and control of this body. It's required at the beginning of the meeting before any business is conducted, and in other words, before any possible action is taken, and then again at the end of the meeting or when possible action items are considered by the board. This board and many boards take a belts and suspenders approach, they try and provide as much public comment as possible. For instance, in this meeting, public comment is taken at the beginning, at the end, and then when there's items that are for possible action. To be clear, though, public comment is only required on those items that are within the jurisdiction control of this body. Frequently, this body will have proclamations declaring, you know, cancer awareness month, recognition of employees who've provided service, deputies or firefighters who've provided exemplary service to the public. Those things are within the jurisdiction and control of this body. It's also within the discretion of the board chairman when the agenda is created, whether to allow an item to come onto the board agenda and whether public comment will be allowed. In the past, the board has been very, I would say, open to public comment that may not be within the jurisdiction and control of this body. Again, frequently comes up is clear and complete agendas. Again, I'm going to skip around to different topics that seem to come up frequently. The board must publish its agenda so that the public knows what the board is going to be considering in an upcoming meeting. That way they know if they want to attend or log in or zoom in. The agenda must include, quote, "clear and complete statement of the topics to be considered." That's found in NRS 241.0203D1. And please forgive me, as I do citations, the open meeting law is fairly short, but it has a lot of subparts. It reminds me of the Internal Revenue Code and all the different sections and subsections. Again, the idea is that a person of ordinary intelligence, if they read the agenda, could understand what the topic is. It doesn't require that every piece of information that someone might find to be valuable be in the topic, because if that were the case, the topic may be complete, but it may not, but it wouldn't be clear, because you'd have a title, an agenda title, that may be, you know, half a page long, especially if it deals with like land use and zoning where you have multiple properties, zoning, assessors' parcel numbers. So there's this balance between clear and complete. The idea, again, though, is to provide the public with notice of what the topic is, and then if they have an interest, they can look at the background information, get a little more information, and then they can show up if they want to participate in the board's discussion. It goes without saying that a higher degree of specificity is needed if an agenda item is of significant interest to the public. For instance, something like, say, the adoption of Resolution 2022.005. If that's all the agenda was, that's incomplete, because a member of the public would have no idea what Resolution 2022.005 has to do with. It's good to provide, for instance, with a contract, who is the contract with, what corporation or the business name. It's also good practice to include the amount of the contract, and maybe just a short description of what the services are going to be provided. Again, the idea is to provide a person of ordinary intelligence enough information so they can look further into it if they want to know more information. I will point out that NRS 244.1171, the county code must be adopted by an ordinance, the only title necessary for the ordinance is, quote, "an ordinance enacting a revision and codification," if I said that right, "codification of the general ordinances of Douglas County," end quote. That's all that's required by NRS. However, our practice has always been to include more information, to include the full title of the ordinance, because that's also required by NRS, but it allows the people, the public, to know what the ordinance is going to be about. There has also been some discussion about combining items. For instance, you may have agenda item one and two, those could have been combined, the election of a chair and vice chair for the Board of County Commissioners and the election of the chair and vice chair of the liquor board. They can be combined. In fact, prior to this meeting, I got a, I took a copy of the agenda from the Attorney General's Opening, Open Meeting Law Task Force. That's the Attorney General's Task Force on the open meeting. It's headed by Rosa Lee Bordelove, who's the senior deputy AG over open meeting law. The agenda for February 22nd, 2021 states, "Items on the agenda may be taken out of order, the OML task force may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and three, the OML task force may delay." That probably sounds familiar. Item one includes the election of a chair and vice chair. That is the topic for consideration. Public comment is not required on that item, although on our agenda, we notify the public that they can speak on that. But public comment is taken on that topic, that agenda title, as an item. It may have parts to it, and as the clerk treasurer correctly noted, the board could vote on them separately, they could have a motion for a chair and vice chair as a voting block. But public comment is only required when that item is heard. If it's, if the public has been notified, the public comment will be taken at that time. Again, it's possible to have public comment at the beginning of a meeting and the end, and that's it. However, I think the better practice is to allow public comment as often as possible, because again, the idea is that you, the elected representatives of the people, should be able to hear what they have to say or think about different items. It's funny how the meeting went, because all the points I brought, I had kind of brought up to cover today, were brought up today. One of the issues I had to deal with, personal attacks, and attacks on, attacks on personalities versus policy. And I appreciate Mr. Slade's comment on that, and he's absolutely right. There's an open meeting law opinion, 2001-22, here's what they said, quote, "A public body may place limitations on caustic personal attacks made by members of the public during the public comment period," end quote. And that's consistent with a federal case, Smith versus Claiborne County Hospital, 870F2, 1375, for those attorneys who may be listening today. But again, under, even under Nevada's open meeting law, "Any discussion regarding someone's character, competence, or alleged misconduct requires written advance notice to that individual," NRS 241.033. So my advice has always been, first off, follow the golden rule, treat others as you would like to be treated. If you feel it is necessary to talk about someone's competence, character, or misconduct, then provide notice to them so they can come and be prepared. Again, the public has a right to know what's going on, but so does, for lack of a better word, the accused. They need to know that their conduct is going to be discussed. And I would also, again, remind the board that your jurisdiction and control is found in NRS, and issues regarding someone's ethics, campaign violations, that's not within the jurisdiction control of this board. Ethical violations go to the Ethics Commission, violations of campaign finance laws go to the Nevada Secretary of State. I love the open meeting law. It's, I remember Quincy, you know, it's this fascinating area, and then all these people are falling because it's gross, but for me, it's fascinating because it's the intersection of government and the people. It's how things are done. And the idea has always been that the people know what you're going to be doing, and they have a reasonable opportunity to come and to share those views with you before you decide to take any action. One other topic that you might be interested, before I open up for questions and answers, is penalties. Each member of the public body that attends a meeting in violation of the OML with knowledge of the violation is guilty of a misdemeanor and is subject to a civil penalty of $500 for the first offense, $1,000 for the second, and $2,500 for every offense thereafter. That's in NRS 241.040. Also, any action taken by the public body in violation of the open meeting law is void. However, any suit to declare an action void must be brought within 60 days of the alleged violation unless told for an additional days under, 30 days, under certain circumstances. So basically, there's 60 days to take action. And this makes sense. If the county is going to undertake, say, enter into a contract for several million dollars to start building a new courthouse or a new administrative building, you don't want to wait a year out before somebody says, oh, stop, what you did was void. So Slade here has tried to balance the interests of the public with, at the end of the day, this is the people's business and we need to move on with it. So there's a 60-day period within which to bring suit, challenging an action taken by a board, an alleged violation of open meeting law. It's also good to know that all penalties that have an impact on individual board members and not the board collectively require a willful violation. And there's an easy way to avoid that. No criminal penalty or administrative fine may be imposed upon any member, in other words, individually upon you, as a member of a public body pursuant to this section, if a member of a public body violates a provision of this chapter as a result of legal advice provided by an attorney employed or retained by the public body. That's in NRS 241.040, paragraph six. So think of your attorneys as your insurance policy. As long as you rely on good faith on the advice of your legal counsel, even if it subsequently is found to be poor advice, you'll be safe from any personal liability. That doesn't mean that the body, the county may be found in violation, you may have to redo the item, but you will not be subject to personal liability. I brought up, I looked up an old AG file. It's a complaint, it's AG file 1389, 13897-188. There's an allegation that Douglas County Commissioners had violated the open meeting law during the consideration of a specific plan regarding some land development. There were two, there were several allegations. One was that by combining agenda items for discussion, for discussion on the agenda item, that was not clear and complete. And by allowing public comment only once for the two agenda items that have been combined was also a violation. As discussed previously, that's not the case, and the AG found no violation had occurred. Again, as the AG, the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Task Force itself does, you can combine items, you just have to let the public know in advance. Look, we may be combining, separating them, continuing them. Let them know what the ground rules are going in, but after that, again, the idea is to have an efficient meeting, because people are spending a lot of time here, and they may not, they may only care about one item, which, if it's the last item, it's a long day for them. So in summary, the open meeting law is, again, to try and bring the people into the process of government, but the legislature understands that you need to be reasonable about this. For one, you're all volunteers. You're not experts in open meeting law or lawyers, or you may have not held office before your current position. We appreciate your service, and we realize you're not experts on this stuff. At the end of the day, the open meeting law is trying to balance the interests of open government with trying, again, to do the will of the people. And with that, I appreciate your time, and there's a lot more, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie, for the presentation. I will bring it back to the board. Once again, this is for presentation only, so the board is asked to provide comments or questions. I'll first go to Commissioner Rice online or in Zoom. Mr. Rice, I know you've been through this many times already, but do you have any comments or questions?
No, I appreciate the way, excuse me, I appreciate the way the district attorney was succinct, and we could cover this for four hours and not cover everything, but I think that he was able to pinpoint many of the items that directly involve this board, and I thank you very much for the training.
Thank you. Mr. Ingles, do you have comments or questions? Thank you. Mr. Tarkanian?
Nope.
And Mr. Noah, okay?
Very good. Mr. Ritchie, the only question I have is, generally, we have asked our advisory boards and commissions that fall under this particular also law, do they, are they, are you planning a training for them as well, or what's the process there?
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, this is their training. I spoke with the clerk's office, and they've been notified of this. It's available for Zoom for them to participate. If it's, if the chair is so inclined, you could open it up for public comment for questions, because I know there are members of various boards here, they may have questions.
Okay, thank you. I know a couple of years ago, I was required, when I was serving on one of those boards, to actually sign an affidavit that I had actually attended the training. So are we still requiring that document by the different members of the boards?
Chairman, Doug Ritchie, for the record, that's above my pay grade, I'm not collecting those signatures.
Okay, so based on Mr. Ritchie's observation, if there are members of boards or commissions that are here today and wish to ask a question in regards to open meeting law, I would entertain their ability to do so at this time, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just follow up on your question, we do have members sign an affidavit, we also have the training available online when it was given by the Ethics Commission. I'm not sure if we're going to upload this one separately or not, but we do that, we continue to do that.
Thank you. Are there any members of boards or commissions who have questions? And I would ask you to, as usual, sign your name and state your name for the record. Thank you.
Virginia Sterrett, I'm on the Airport Advisory Committee, and my question is just general about the open meeting law. If in one agenda item you've written it incorrectly, let's say, and so someone files an open meeting law violation, does the entire meeting become invalid so that you have to go back and redo everything for the whole meeting because that one item had a problem? That's my question, thank you.
Chairman, if I may, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office, that's a great question, the answer is no. Only those items that were found to be in violation of the open meeting law would be void, and you'd, the public body would have to re-agendize properly notice and then fix the problem. I will also state, if there is a violation, the board has to put that on the record, has to acknowledge that there was a finding of a violation.
That, so I have a question to that, is that this board that has to put it on the record, or is it the advisory board that has to put it on the?
Sorry, Chairman, Doug Ritchie again. No, it's whichever public body, in this case, the Airport Advisory Board, if they were to have been found to violate the open meeting law, they would need to agendize the correction and acknowledge the error and fix whatever the problem was.
Thank you. Are there any other members on any of our other boards that wish to ask questions in regards to open meeting law? So we have a number of boards that are five-member boards, we have a number of member boards that are larger than that, so you're talking strictly a quorum of that. So if it's a seven-member board, then it would be four members, five-member board, three, is that, that's correct?
Yes, Chairman, Doug Ritchie, that is correct. Quorum is the simple majority of that body.
I know all this, I just want to make sure that it's on the public record and other ears hear it, so thank you. Without further ado... Without further ado, then, I guess, I guess your presentation is over. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. And I will note that the county recorded a prior open meeting law presentation, it was a lot longer and a lot more in-depth. People can look at that. There's also ethics training by former Director Yvonne. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. So we'll move on to item number four on the agenda. Appointment to the, appointment of the B O C C to the various board commissions, board and commissions for 2022 for possible action. Discussion to approve the appointment of county commissioners, staff and alternates to various Douglas County Boards and Committees. These boards, commissions, meetings, I don't know that that sounds right. These boards, commissions or committees, I think, include but are not limited to the Nevada Association of Counties, the Northern Nevada Development Authority, Carson Water Subconservancy District, Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, Law Library, Nevada Works, Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce, Carson Valley Visitors Authority, Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, Lake Tahoe South, South Shore Chamber of Commerce, Western Nevada Development District, Regional Transportation Commission, the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District, the State Line Stormwater Association, Joint Powers Waste Management, Tahoe Transportation District, Carson Valley Arts Council, the Audit Committee, Quad County Coalition, China Spring Youth Camp and Aurora Pines Girls Facility Advisory Council, Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority, State Land Use Planning Advisory Council and the Debt Management Commission. And this is going to be done by Mr. Kates. And I, I think it's important to recognize or help the public recognizes that our commissioners have many more responsibilities than just sitting here two times a month for five or six or seven hours, whatever it takes to get the business done. We're very active in other positions within our county. So that, that certainly should go recognized by the public and by fellow commissioners. So thank you. Mr. Kates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that sounds like there's a lot of things you need to do in this agenda item, but I've tried to distill it down into the actions that you need to consider. Over the last couple of years, we've spent a lot of time trying to clean up our records in my office related to boards and commissions. We didn't have really good records of what term people were in, how long their terms were, what the authority was for qualifications, that sort of thing. We've really been working on that, particularly with the volunteers. And we've done that for the appointments of commissioners to the other boards and commissions. And really, most of these are currently in the middle of a term. There's only a few of them that are one-year terms that the board would need to consider either reappointing the existing members or, or perhaps changing who they appoint. In the agenda packet, page one sixty-eight, there's a spreadsheet that lined out all of the various positions and, and who the appointee is. And I have that up on the screen. I'm sorry, it's, it's a little bit small. But there's really only four, the Audit Committee, Naco, Quad County Coalition and Western Nevada Development District that are one-year terms that the board would need to either reappoint the existing members or appoint another member of the board. I will note that in the packet, that also included the Regional Transportation Commission, which I have highlighted on the spreadsheet. That was in air with further research and, and input from Chief Civil Deputy District Attorney Ritchie. The Regional Transportation Commission term is set in statute and that term would not end until the end of the current calendar year. So really, there's only four that you specifically need to address. Of course, it's the prerogative of the board if any of these other positions, if, if a member no longer wants to sit on that board or commission, that's certainly up for discussion as well and consideration by the board. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kates. So I guess the first one you indicated was the Audit Committee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I believe Commissioner Noisad sits currently on that?
Correct.
So I would ask, Mr. Noisad, would you like to stay in that position? What's that?
Let us march on.
Okay, so you're good with that?
That's an, that's an affirmative answer.
Okay, okay, good. And what was the next one?
The next one is the Nevada Association of Counties. The current appointee is you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, okay. And so with, with as many committees as I'm on, I've enjoyed my time, commissioners, I've, I've enjoyed my time on Naco and, but in consideration of, of the other activities that I have, I would prefer if, if Mr. Tarkanian is in concurrence, he currently serves, I believe, as the alternate to Naco. And if he's in concurrence, I'd like to flip those responsibilities and have him be the primary to Naco and I would serve as the alternate. Would that be good for you, Mr. Tarkanian?
Sure.
Okay. So if you could flip those, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
The others? What's the next one?
So the next one is the Quad County Coalition. This is our lobbying group. Typically, that is the chair and vice chair. For the last year, that was Chairman Ingles and, and you, Commissioner Gardner, that's out on that.
Okay. So traditionally, that's the chair and the vice chair?
Correct.
So I, I certainly don't want to step on Mr. Ingles' toes there, but what is your, what is your feeling, Mr. Ingles?
We can have it.
Okay. So we'll change that to Commissioner Gardner and Commissioner Rice as the alternate.
Okay.
What else is there?
And the last one is Western Nevada Development District and Commissioner Tarkanian is the current appointee.
Mr. Tarkanian, are you interested in remaining on that?
I am unless somebody else wants to.
Any objections to that, commissioners? Okay, so we'll, we'll leave Mr. Tarkanian there. I have discovered a couple of other time, what, I don't know how to say this.
Conflict?
Conflicts. I've, I've discovered a couple of other time conflicts, okay? For instance, there's two other boards that I serve on. One is, I'm the primary and the other one is, I'm an alternative. First of all, the South Shore, South Tahoe Shore, I am not sure exactly what the name is, Chamber of Commerce, I was assigned to that and that conflicts with my activities with the Carson Valley Visitors Authority, the meetings conflict. So I would like to find an alternative commissioner to serve in that capacity. Do I have any feelings from my fellow commissioners in that regard?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rice?
I have been approached by the chairman of, of that organization and sing us out that I represent Lake Tahoe and that's the South Shore Chamber. I was asked if I would be willing to serve, knowing that you had that conflict. So with your permission, I would, I would like to add that to my list of various chores.
Have you checked with the individual behind you and whether or not that's susceptible to her? I, I mean, you have a lot on your, you have a lot on your calendar already, but, but if you want to take on that also, I, I'm good with that. And you were the, you were the alternative to that, but I don't see that my ability to serve either as the primary or the alternative would be workable because, once again, I, I prefer to stay on the Carson Valley Visitors Authority and those meetings conflicts. So is there another commissioner who would like to volunteer to serve as the alternate in that regard? Mr. Tarkanian or?
No, thank you.
Mr. Noisad? Okay, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll throw Mr. Noisad into there. I believe they meet at like nine thirty or eight thirty on the third Wednesday of the month, so maybe you, you can go up there and have, have breakfast at the lake. Okay. And the other one that I have is I am the alternate on the Carson Valley Arts Council and I have a conflict. They meet on the third Monday night of the month, each month, and I can no longer, I, I have a commitment on that, even though I'm just the alternate. So I would like to possibly have a fill-in to serve as alternate for that. Is there a commissioner that would like to serve as Mr. Ingles' alternate on the Arts Council? I, I assume, Mr. Ingles, you would like to stay on the Arts Council? I'm making that assumption. Okay, I see your head shaking, yes, so, okay. So we need an alternate for, for that position. Is that correct, Mr. Kates?
That is correct. And for this one, it does not necessarily have to be a commissioner. It could be staff if no commissioner wants to do it.
Okay. Well, I'll throw it open to the commissioners and, and see Mr. Tarkanian, Mr. Noisad.
I think with my appointment on Naco and the other ones, I was put on the, one at the end of last year, two, a new one, I, I think my plate is pretty full.
Okay. Okay. So can we appoint a member of staff then? It doesn't appear that we have a commissioner that's interested, so could we appoint a member of staff, Mr. Kates?
We certainly could and I have not cleared this with her, but I would suggest Assistant County Manager Jennifer Davidson. She's expressed an interest in being more involved in the art community and the county.
Okay, why don't you put her name in there? She, she's going to be voluntold.
That's what, that's what happens when you're not here.
You've heard that term before, right? Voluntold? Yes. Okay. Now, I, that, that, those clear my, my conflicts, but I want to find out, Mr. Rice, do you have any conflicts or any desires to have a replacement or other boards?
No, sir. I, I'm very pleased to represent the ones that I am on and I, I'm just counting up, I'm on eleven boards and commissions, so I, I don't think I want to be adding any more to that other than what we've already done. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Ingles, any, any desires, changes to your, your assignments? I know you're very involved with the Western, or the Northern Nevada Development Agency, right? So. Okay, thank you. Mr. Tarkanian, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. And Mr. Noisad? Okay, looks like we're all good. I, I think we've covered it all, have we, Mr. Kates?
Yes, yes, we have.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we need, oh, this is for possible action, so we need to open it to public comment. Is there any public comment in chambers that would like to comment on any of these assignments? Sensing none here, are there any online? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson, for the record, I do have a few callers I'll check with first. Caller that ends in four, four, one, five, do you have public comment on item number four? Okay, no response. Caller that ends in seven, one, zero, two, do you have public comment on item number four?
I do not have public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller that ends in zero, nine, seven, two, do you have public comment on item number four?
No.
Thank you. I'll check with the first caller again, and if any other listeners online have public comment, please raise your hand. Caller that ends in four, four, one, five, do you have public comment on item number four? No response and no one has indicated they have public comment at this time.
Thank you. So this is for possible action. Before we get into that, I would like to indicate that we have a, last year when we did this, we didn't have a lot of interest from the Board of Commissioners to serve on the State Land Use Planning Agency, SLU-PAC. So therefore, we appointed a member of the public who happens to be our vice chair currently of our planning commissioner, planning commission, Maureen Casey, that it was a three-year appointment. And I do know in communications with her, she has been very diligent in, in, in making those meetings and, and has reported back to us. And so I want to make mention of that and thank her. I know she's in the audience today, so I want to thank her for her activities in that regard on behalf of this board. Thank you, Maureen. So, okay. With that, any further discussion and possible motion? Commissioners?
And I've put it up on the screen highlighted, hopefully big enough for you to, to read it off.
Mr. Chair? I make a motion that we accept the board and commission appointments for commissioners as indicated by the slide.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion that Mr. Noisad seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. Any further discussion on the motion? Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes five, zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kates, for the... Our last break, we're going to get into the meat of the matter here on, on some fairly heavy items, so I would suggest that we take a fifteen-minute break and, and resume back at, at three o'clock if there's no objections from the commissioners. Okay, very good. We'll be back at three. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
And so if you could please take your seats, I'd appreciate it.
Recording in progress.
It is now three o'clock, so we will resume our meeting. We're on item number five, proposed redistricting maps for possible action. Evaluate, discuss, and take possible action on proposed redistricting maps. Changing the election district boundaries for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners based on census data from 2020 to ensure compliance with Nevada revised statutes, Chapter 244. This discussion will be led by, and presentation will be done by County Clerk Treasurer Amy Bergens.
Thank you Chairman Gardner. I'm gonna, I have a short presentation and then we will move into discussion.
Thank you. And I should note for the record that all five commissioners are present.
Wonderful. Can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. So today we're going to discuss redistricting. So what is redistricting? Redistricting is the process of redrawing the boundaries of the districts that are consistent within Douglas County. Every 10 years after receiving data from the census, the districts must be redrawn so that each ward is substantially equal in population. How is redistricting done? Redistricting is done using GIS software purchased by the county to import district population numbers along with data received from the census. Population establishes the commissioner district, not the number of registered voters, and the districts should be within a 10% variable of each other based on the most current census population numbers. An example of that is if one district is 4% below the ideal number and one district is 3% above the ideal number, the total percentage spread is 7%. And we'd like to keep each of the districts within 10%. The guidelines used for redistricting. We start with Nevada revised statute 244.018. If new or changed county commissioner election districts must be established because of changes in population or applicable law, the Board of County Commissioners shall establish those districts by ordinance. And then County Code 2.04.005C pursuant to Chapters 244 and 237 of NRS, the Board of County Commissioners reserves for itself the determination of the boundaries of the election district. We also use state and federal regulations. Redistricting process abides by applicable state and federal laws, including the Federal Voting Rights Act and the Equal Protection Clause. Equal in population. The goal of redistricting is to get the districts within a 10% variable like I explained in the previous slide. Contiguous. Districts must be geographically contiguous, which means they connect at all points. Community integrity. Districts should allow for representation of general areas of the county having similar or common interests or affinities. Geographic street and natural boundaries will be accounted for in establishing district boundaries and be used as divisions when practicable and legal. Reflect the core of existing districts. Districts should retain the core of the existing district to the extent possible. Districts should be created using the existing district boundaries as a benchmark. Current incumbents. To the extent practicable, avoid contest between incumbents. And community input. Input on the redistricting proposals was, it said will be, but it was solicited from the public. So the timeline for the commissioner districts, for the redistricting. So December 6th, 2000, oh, that should say 2021, I apologize. Through January 5th, 2022, public input was received on the proposed map. That public input, along with a chart, was uploaded last night as supplemental around 4:30 in the afternoon. It's in your supplemental packet. January 6th, that's today, the presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on the proposed map to include public input. The B O C C is to select a map to adopt via ordinance. January 20th, 2022, at the B O C C meeting, will be the first reading of the ordinance on the proposed map that you select today. February 3rd, 2022, at the B O C C meeting, will be the second reading and adoption of the ordinance with the proposed map. And that should be actually February 18th, 2022, the ordinance will go into effect. I apologize for that, that typographical error. And then March 7th through 18th is candidate filing. We are on a very tight timeline and I apologize for that. As most of you are aware, the census data was delayed due to the COVID pandemic. It didn't get to the legislature until November and that's when we got it. So it's been, or until October and then in November, they convened a special session and then we got the data in order for us to start redistricting. So we had a very tight timeline to do this and I apologize for that. So the current commissioner districts, this is a picture of the current commissioner districts as they stand. Currently, there is a 15.8% variance in the population. So we want to get that under 10%. That's our target goal. As you can see, and I'll try and explain this chart to you. The district number is the first row. The second is the population right now. The target population that we are trying to get to for each district is 9,898. That is based on the census data that was given to us, based on the 2020 census numbers. We had a little less than 50,000 people in Douglas County. So our target population for each district would be 9,898. The fourth row is the deviation. That's how far off we are above or below in each of those districts from the target population. And then the last row is the target deviation percentage wise. So if you take the highest number, which is District 3, they're 10% above the target deviation, or target population. And you take District 1, which is the lowest, it's 5.8% below. We are at 15.8% variance from our target population. The next map is proposal number one. This map, I apologize, let me get to my notes. This map uses the current district boundaries and moves them to capture the population necessary to ensure the districts are within the desired 10% variable from the 2020 census data. This map does not do any cleanup. It just moves the lines of the existing boundaries to make the numbers work. And I will show you those numbers. Again, our target population is 9,898. And you can see on this map, the deviation from high to low is .59%. Proposed map number two uses the current district boundaries as the starting point, taking into account the criteria of not dividing the towns and district lines where it is not otherwise necessary to do so. Currently, the towns of Genoa and Mindon are split between Districts 2 and 3. This is a cleanup map that allows for all three towns to be in one district. Proposed map number two captures the population necessary to ensure the districts are within the desired 10% variable from the 2020 census data. And the deviation on this map is from high to low, 7.14% variance. Proposed map three uses the current district boundaries as a starting point, taking into the account the criteria of not dividing the towns and district lines that is not otherwise necessary to do so. Currently, the towns of Gardinerville and Mindon are split between Districts 2 and 3. This cleanup map allows for the two towns to be in one district, but the town of Genoa remains in District 4. This also captures the population necessary with a variance of 7.08%. And you can see that on this chart. So what's next? At this meeting, the clerk's office is requesting that the commissioners choose a map to bring forward as an ordinance to be presented and possibly adopted. The first reading would be set for the next meeting, January 20th, 2022. The second reading and adoption would be set for February 3rd, 2022, and the ordinance would go into effect February 18th, 2022. And at that, I would ask if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bergens. So we'll bring it to the board for questions and comments. Then we will take it to the gallery for chambers for public comment. We'll go to online public comment and then bring it back to the board for further comments, discussion, and a possible motion. As I take it, Ms. Bergens, your timeline is all predicated and basically has, is basically a backwards movement from, from basically when we have to have this in for candidate filing and today's date. All those dates are predicated on that. Is that a correct assumption?
That is a correct assumption. This all is a very tight timeframe because of the late release of the census numbers. So there's not a lot of wiggle room.
Thank you. Commissioners, we can start with, first I guess we'll start with Mr. Tarkanian. He has his hand up.
Thank you. Amy, one of the criterias was current incumbents. To the extent practical, avoid contest between incumbents. Do any of the three maps violate that principle?
So thank you for that question, Commissioner Tarkanian. I will start with just letting everyone know that when I started this project in the beginning of November, I did not have knowledge of where any of the commissioners lived. I knew general areas due to the fact that they're in the district that they're in, that each of you are in. However, I don't actually know where each of you live. I have come to find out since doing these maps that it does exclude, let me back up, that Proposal 2 and Proposal 3 does exclude Commissioner Ingalls from his district. However, I did not know that at the time that I did it. But I will say, it was, it was very difficult to do all of the tasks, or guidelines, I should say. It was hard to do all of the guidelines. I felt like cleaning up the towns was important. They are, they are split between two separate districts and felt that they were unrepresented. I actually had one of the town managers come to me with that information, which is what prompted me to create those maps and to really dive into what redistricting looks like. So I ensure that there, you know, there is a map that keeps all the incumbents where they are, however, it doesn't necessarily do the cleanup that is also one of the guidelines. And I will say that this is a process that's only done 10 years, once every 10 years. This is a chance for the commissioners to really look into what the county is looking for as far as where the commissioners live. The maps themselves do not exclude anyone from voting for all five of the commissioners. The commissioners are elected at large. What it does is just give boundaries where the candidates for commissioner have to live within those boundaries.
Thank you. Mr. Noah's head? Comments, questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ingalls? No questions. Mr. Rice? Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions, however, I'm uncomfortable with distancing out any commissioner out of his current district. I like proposal number one. It looks to me like the fewest changes, as well as the population differentials are very close. So I could be persuaded otherwise, but it looks to me like that would be the fairest one for all concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Since he no other comments from, Mr. Ingalls?
Commissioner, the district number two includes more of Genoa, or the map number two, and Genoa has grown substantially in the last 10 years. And it's really not part of the lake any longer. And I'm of the persuasion that map number two would be more in accord with the population. Thank you.
Okay, well, since you know other comments or questions from the board, we'll take it to public comment from the members that are here in chambers and then we will call on those who are online, Ms. Johnson. So if...
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Ainsworth, Genoa Lakes resident. So I have comments on all three options. Option one, as just stated, is a fairly simple modification of the existing districts and produces a very good population variation, only about half a percent. It's a kind of a no-brainer from a rules standpoint, if you look at it that way. Option three, I'll skip to option three. Option three puts the towns of Mindon and Gardinerville together, keeping them relatively intact, but does take an incumbent commissioner out of his existing district, as was just mentioned. Theoretically, that's to be avoided if possible. So that's something to think about. Something also to think about is the opinion of the town managers of Mindon and Gardinerville. I haven't heard much from them. It would be interesting to know how they feel about option three. Population variance there is 7%, round numbers. The real reason I'm here is in opposition to number two. It should be a non-starter. It completely violates the community integrity principle as it carves out the heart of our integrated Genoa and West Valley area. The town of Genoa wouldn't be what it is today had it not gotten and continues to get the support from its surrounding area. It makes no sense to draw boundaries as presented in option two. So I made this pitch last night at the Genoa Town Advisory Board meeting and after a short discussion, the board members came to a quick consensus. Our town manager, Matt Brubak, is here to relay their comments.
Hi, Don Commissioners. Mr. Kates and Mr. Ritchie, my name is Matt Brubak. I'm the town manager.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name's Matt Brubak. I'm the town manager for the town of Genoa. So at our meeting last night, it was unanimous. After reviewing the new options, the proposals for the new guidelines for the commissioners, that proposal two was a non-starter for the town of Genoa. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you. But the board did direct me to come here today to relay that message to you.
Matt, which, which map did the citizens of Genoa want?
They did not specifically say. They liked one and they liked three and they thought that it would be up to the commissioners to make that decision.
Thank you, Matt.
James McAlpin, for the record. I'm on the Rancho's GID trustee and I'm here speaking for myself, just to make that clear. This is like a lot of decisions, even ones I don't have to make. If I see it as a difficult decision, I think map two is an attempt to put the three towns in one district, but I think as already stated, Genoa is more than what is its town boundary and therefore isn't properly represented in map two. Map one, I've kind of called the status quo. It does keep sitting commissioner in his district. I know that's important. Doesn't kind of fix the disjointed district that's in two different areas. So I feel like eventually that's a problem that's going to have to be addressed. And I'm sure it's going to be, it kind of almost looks like it's gerrymandered. Looks like some of those political districts that get written, or one's here and one part's down there. Map three, I call cleanup on aisle three. I worked in the grocery business. It keeps populations together, the Gardinerville-Mindon area together. It's important to me and all of the maps actually do a good job of keeping ranchos together, which is, which is important. It's, it kind of keeps people together and then it takes the other three districts and makes them more geographic than they are now. So I think that that's in a sense, it can keep your populations together and make you more geographic sense. But again, I hate to see somebody, you know, taken out of their district that's a sitting commissioner. So I basically tell you, there's things I like on one and three, I don't like two. I kind of lean towards three, except for the disservice to Commissioner Ingalls. And I give you, wish you luck on this decision. Glad I'm not making it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
J.D. Frisbee, town manager, town of Mindon. When Dan mentioned that he hadn't heard much from the town managers, I came running from my office, so apologize if I'm breathing heavy. I'm not afraid to go on record to say that I was the town manager that came to Amy a few months ago and mentioned that the town of Mindon and many of the residents that come through our office have, have felt unrepresentative on this board. No offense to Mr. Ingalls, he's done an excellent job, but he doesn't live within the town boundaries. Doesn't live in Gardinerville, which we are disconnected as of right now with the current districting. And so the town felt that they would like to see the lines met or put together in a way that guaranteed someone from, from the town of Gardinerville, town of Mindon on this board. It went as far as taking Genoa into account because it is the third town also, but I don't know if that's the feeling that some of the members of Genoa, the golf course area are not comfortable with that. I think that's fine with the town of Mindon. The biggest thing for myself and with Gardinerville was just making sure that the two towns were represented, represented on this board and moving forward. I probably wouldn't have said anything had Mr. Ingalls not, not mentioned maybe some support towards two, which would take him out of his area if I'm not mistaken. So with that said, I am here today to go on record to say the town of Mindon would like to see option two or three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two districts and I'm not, I don't have a map in front of me, Amy?
That's my district.
Actually, actually, Mr. Tarkanian, so the Gardinerville Ranchos, which is District 1, pretty much right now, that is your district. No, there's a difference between the Gardinerville Ranchos and the town of Gardinerville. You, the Gardinerville Ranchos are not part of the township Gardinerville.
When I was elected, one of my first meetings was to go and meet with the town manager of Gardinerville and he took me through and showed me everything that I was supposed to be representing, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's very confusing. It is. I don't, I don't, Mr. Noah's head's address, I believe, is Carson City and my address is Wellington, which is Lyon County. And so it's, it's a convoluted mess is what it is. But the Gardinerville Ranchos had some very specific boundaries. They're a GID. The town of Gardinerville does have some very specific boundaries also. Their township and the township of Mindon also is very specific. But right now, as I understand it, and Mrs. Bergens can correct me if I'm wrong, but District 3, which I represent, includes South County and also parts of the town of Gardinerville and parts of the town of Mindon as well in District 3. So...
Correct. Chairman Gardner, so currently the towns of Mindon and Gardinerville are both in 3 and 2, so Districts 2 and 3. So they're kind of hodgepodge into two different districts. That's what this, this main cleanup was, to get just those two towns and possibly Genoa into their own district so that they aren't hodgepodge, for lack of a better word, into multiple districts and therefore represented differently. However, I will say that District 1 is the GID, Gardinerville Ranchos GID, and it will stay the Gardinerville Ranchos GID. However, we did clean up on that, on the line in the proposed map 2 and 3.
Thank you, Ms. Bergens. We veered a little bit away from public comment, so let's get back to public comment if we would, in chambers. Is there any other further comment in chambers? If not, then we'll go to public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. We do have someone with their hand raised indicating public comment on this item, but I'm going to check with the callers first. Caller ending in 4415, do you have public comment on item number five? Okay, no response. Caller ending in 7102, do you have public comment on item number five?
I do not have public comment.
I do not have public comment. Thank you.
Mr. Slade, do you have public comment on item number five?
I do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please state your name, and we'll start your time.
Jim Slade. When I look at the seven guidelines that are to be used for redistricting, there are a few of them that stick out at me. The second one, of course, is equal in population. And obviously, the first proposed map, which is the closest to the existing map, has only 0.59 variance, whereas map three has 12 times that amount, and map two has even more than 12 times that amount. So in that regard, map one seems like the most appropriate. When I look at contiguous, you know, it's contiguous to map two to put Genoa in with the other towns, but I don't think it makes any sense, and neither do the residents or certainly the town manager of Genoa. You know, they're a very small town. Mindon and Gardner Ville are much more urban and much larger, so I don't think that makes any sense. No one seems to be supporting that one very much. When I look at community integrity, that they have similar common interests and affinities, and that geographic street or natural boundaries will be accounted for in establishing districts. As some of you may know, I live in the Foothill area to the west of Highway 88, and whereas most of Mr. Gardner's district is referred to as South County, it is all accessed by Highway, almost all of it, I believe, accessed by Highway 395. A large part of it is east of Highway 395. It is quite a stretch to get over to the Foothill area to the west of Route 88. So I don't think that we have common interests or affinities, particularly with South County. And I think certainly myself and others would prefer to stay where we are now. And I believe that that would also reflect the core of the existing districts. I think map one makes the most sense in that regard, too. A lot of the guidelines are somewhat vague, and you can argue one way or the other about which of the three proposed maps makes the most sense in that regard. The one that is quite clear is number six, about where the current incumbents live. And to me, it's very disappointing and almost unconscionable that nobody looked at where the incumbents live. And I don't think it's fair to Mr. Ingles that he would be removed from his district and that he would be thrown into a district with Mr. Gardner, so he couldn't run this year. He could run in two years from now against Mr. Gardner. And, you know, to me, that is the most clear issue arguing against map three. So I would argue, like Commissioner Rice for map one, it is more equal in population. It provokes community integrity more than map three. It reflects the core of the existing districts. And importantly, it does not remove an elected official from office without the opportunity to run for reelection this year. So for those reasons, I think map one is the only one that's acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. I did indulge you with about another half minute of extra comment there. Usually, it's been my observation, when you've come before us with public comment, that you've been very careful in timing out your public comments to stay within the guidelines. But anyways, I appreciate your comments as well, so.
Thank you. I didn't have any written comments this time. If I'd heard the buzzer, I would have wrapped it up more quickly. I was just speaking from the cuff for a change.
Thank you.
But thank you. I didn't realize I had extra time there. Thank you.
So, Ms. Marsha, is there any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have someone else online who has indicated they would like to provide public comment. Beth, do you have public comment on item number five?
Yes, my name is Beth Hinaski. I live in Gardner Ville in Chechester Estates. A couple of questions maybe for Ms. Bergens. There was some online and other public input on these maps, and I don't see that reported today in the agenda packet. So I would be curious to find out what the public comments were. And also, I agree on proposal number one as far as keeping the integrity of each town within its own boundaries and not splitting them up. That was one of my concerns on some of the larger districting for other offices. And I've been through this before, 10 years ago, and not in this locality, and it was very difficult, I understand, to keep towns together, but sometimes you just have to. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Chairman Gardner, do you mind if I respond, or would you rather I wait?
I think we can wait until we hear other public comment. There may be other comments that might inspire more conversation from you, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. Okay, now would you like to respond, Ms. Bergens?
Thank you, Chairman Gardner. Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer, for the record. I did wait until last night or yesterday afternoon to pull the data from the online survey. I sent it over to the county manager's office, and Marsha did upload it at about 4:30 yesterday afternoon, so it is part of the supplemental. That's why it's not in the agenda packet. And just, it does give each, when people did make public comment in that, that is written within the public comment, and then I also put a pie chart. And that pie chart has 70.59% of the people that responded as preferring option three, and 23.53 as option one, and then the remainder was option two. So the majority did prefer option three.
Thank you, Ms. Bergens. So I'm going to bring it back to the board now. So I haven't commented yet, so I will make a few comments here. I do rely and try to look at public sentiment in regards to all issues, and I do recognize the tremendous amount of support that option number three brings us. At the same point in time, public comment has really negated any positive aspects of the option number two, which includes all three townships together. So I'm certainly not of a mind to look at option two. So I think we're down to option one and option three, in my mind. Of course, that is dependent upon a motion by one of my fellow commissioners. I share the sentiment also, though, of the possibility of accepting a map that would take a sitting commissioner out of their district. And so I have problems with that aspect of the other maps. So anyways, but that's, once again, that's up to my fellow commissioners to make motions and bring forward. But I could perhaps accept that option one or two, one or three appear to be appropriate. So with that, I'll call on my other commissioners to add additional comments or perhaps bring forward a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rice.
I have a question for the district attorney. Assuming that option three were decided on, that would remove Mr. Ingles from his district. What would be the ramifications to that? Would that remove him from office, or would he remain in office until such time as they had another election? I'm not clear on that.
I can actually answer that if you prefer, Mr. Ritchie.
I think Ms. Gregory is going to answer that question.
Yeah, Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. No, it wouldn't affect Mr. Ingles, Commissioner Ingles' current status until such time as he was have to file for reelection. I believe it's actually called out in the packet, and I don't know if you can pull up the screen for us. Amy, that would be prescriptive, if you can.
I'm sorry, which screen would you like me to pull up?
I'm looking for it right now. But no, it would not remove him from his current position. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Rice?
Well, I'm curious. Number one, I don't want to see anybody removed from the board because of redistricting. I think that's totally unfair. But it would seem to me that both Mr. Ingles and I are up for reelection this cycle. And what would happen, would his district just be gone, and he wouldn't be able to run for reelection, or he would have to wait and run in another race two years down the line? I'm not clear on that.
Right. So if you look at your packet on page 171, NRS calls it out. And so basically, he would have to either, depending on which map is chosen, if that district where he lives was up for reelection, he would have to file for that one, or wait until that one is up, depending on which maps, because that changes the district and then changes the times. But if you look on page 171, it does say, except as otherwise provided in NRS, if the county commissioners are from a new district, there is an incumbent of any county commissioner elected at large or from a validly established election district, which Mr. Ingles is, whose term extends beyond the first Monday of the January of the following year. Such incumbent county commissioner is entitled to serve out that term and shall be deemed to represent the new district in which he or she resides. So he would have to file for, he would finish out his term, and then, depending on how the district changed, then he would have to file appropriately in that district. And it depends on which map you're talking about, because there are two different districts.
Thank you. Any further questions with Ms. Gregory?
Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Ingles is moved out, where would he be moved into?
Ms. Bergens, if you want to address that, I believe with regards to maps two and three.
Correct. So based on, I apologize, I'm going to it right now. In proposal number two, he would end up in District, his residence would be in District Three, and in proposal number three, the same. So he would be moved into District Three.
Mr. Noah Sad.
Aren't you District Three?
Yes, I am.
So this man on my right is going to be up for reelection in '22, but he can't run in District Three, or could he?
He could run in two years.
In three years. He's up for reelection in '22.
Well, it's obvious I've been pushed out, and I look forward to running against Commissioner Gardner, so, thank you.
Oh, okay. And so, Mr. Ingles, I did see your light on earlier. Did you have additional comments or questions? Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think he said he wants to run against you. That was his comment. I would just like to make a comment. Okay, so I'm looking, this is my first time through this, but I'm looking at the guidelines that Amy had given us. Equal in population, District One is by far the best. Option one is still contiguous, and quite honestly, I look at this, it seems to me like they have more in common because it's all on the west side and you're not crossing the 88, just staying on the 395 area as Mr. Slade. God, this is really a weird day. I'm agreeing with Mr. Slade on something. So I think it falls under that. You look at community integrity, that's what my last comment was, reflect the core of the existing districts. Obviously, option one does that, it's the closest, and it protects the current incumbents. I don't see, I think this is a no-brainer. I understand there's been community input online that had a higher number of people preferring number three instead of number one, but we don't know if those people who voted knew that they were going to exclude a commissioner. I mean, the people here have all spoken, and most of them, if not all, have been in favor of number one, and they know it would exclude a commissioner. So I don't think the community input was fully informed of all the ramifications. I think number one is a no-brainer. Although I would love to see a race between you two. God, it would be fun.
Thank you, Mr. Tarkanian. So anyways, are all the commissioners finished with their comments, or if that's the case, we will entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Noah Sad.
I agree with Chairman, Commissioner Tarkanian. The numbers favor number one. Let's face it. The split is really good. Remember that we elect commissioners by general election, the entire county votes. We represent the entire county. So the only thing that goes on here is to be sure that the guy who is going to be occupying one of these chairs is in the correct district. My favor, I'm in favor of number one.
I spoke at a group the other day, and they asked me about this, and I indicated that my attempt after getting elected was to represent all citizens of Douglas County. And I believe all of my associates here, all four of you, share that same feeling. You try to represent all constituents, all citizens of Douglas County, and I appreciate that, regardless of where you live. So I think that's important. So anyways, at this time, I would entertain a motion by a commissioner.
I'll make a motion to adopt option number one. Is it called option?
Option number one.
Proposal number one.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion to accept option number one. Is that the correct option? Option number one, by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad. Any further discussion or comments? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Sensing no opposed? Oh, Mr. Ingles votes no.
We had a saying in the army, but I can't repeat it here.
Okay. So anyways, on a four-on vote, with Mr. Ingles dissenting, we have to go forward with option number one, Ms. Bergens. So as I understand it, you'll bring option number one back to the board in the form of an ordinance, if I'm not, or a presentation on January 20th?
It'll just be the first reading of the ordinance.
Right. Okay. Okay. So it'll be the first reading, and then the second reading will occur on February the 6th?
Third.
Third. So February 3rd. Okay, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Okay. And then, so after we approve an ordinance, it takes two weeks to post, so that we will meet the timeline of making sure that our districts are done in a timely manner so that folks running for office have the opportunity to know what the districts are. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll look forward to you bringing that back to the board. Moving right along. Item number six, ordinance 2022-1592, amendment to Chapter 18-10, East Fork Fire Protection District. This is for presentation only. Introduction of ordinance 2022-1592, and ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 18.10, East Fork Fire Protection District, specifically. East Fork Fire Protection District, specifically revisions to 18.10.30, organization, and the addition of new section 18.10.035, changes in election district boundaries in order to ensure as reasonably practicable equal-sized election districts in representation by directors following the release of the 10-year United States Census data. I believe the presentation will be by Cynthia, Mr. Gregory, or Ms. Bergens?
Cynthia Gregory, I'm happy to make the presentations. This is simply an introduction of an ordinance. The East Fork Fire Protection District, at their December meeting, recommended to its board, and it did approve, a ordinance change, which was brought forward to Ms. Bergens, and we are bringing it forward to this board. As Mr. Tarkanian said, every 10 years, the census is done, and so this is new for all of us, including the East Fork Fire Protection District. It was formed in 2017, and at that time, what they did is they aligned their trustee district boundaries with the board boundaries. That included, obviously, Tahoe-Douglas Fire Protection District. So when redistricting came around in 2020, that does not make the numbers equal. So they decided to take a look at that, and this would allow them to remove, create their own maps, which would remove the Truckee, or excuse me, Truckee, Tahoe-Douglas Fire Protection District, and thus create equal representation amongst themselves. I know Ms. Bergens attended their meeting, has been working with them on potential redistricting maps, as well as the school district. So there's a lot of moving pieces. And so based on that, they've requested that this ordinance come forward, so that they can provide equal protection for their citizens as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Bergens, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Chairman Gardner, not at this time. If you have any questions, though, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. This is a presentation only, so we'll bring it to the board for comments and questions. Mr. Ingles? Okay. Mr. Rice? Is Mr. Rice still with us? Okay. With that, if there's no, I have no questions either. So anyways, thank you, and we appreciate the presentation. We'll move on. Item seven has been withdrawn by County Clerk-Treasure Amy Bergens for review on our January 20th agenda. So we'll move on to item number eight. Settlement Agreement, Vacation Home Rental Federal Lawsuit for Possible Action. So this will allow for public comment. Discussion to authorize the settlement of a lawsuit filed by nine plaintiffs in the United States District Court on July 8, 2021. Case number 3, semi-colon, 21-CV-00293, against Douglas County, with each party to pay its own attorney's fees and costs in authorizing the chairman to sign the settlement agreement and any other required documents. Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. As the board is aware, the county's been working on the VHR regulations for many years. In July, the VHR regulations were amended and changed. A group of nine plaintiffs believed that their constitutional rights had been infringed upon and filed a federal lawsuit. We've been engaged in litigation, we, meaning the county, has been engaged in litigation with the plaintiffs since that time. As part of the federal rules of civil procedure, the parties are required, or the council for parties are required to meet, exchange witnesses, documents, and discuss alternative means of dispute resolution. On October 15, 2021, Federal Magistrate Judge Carla Baldwin entered an order scheduling a settlement conference for the parties. The parties, Douglas County was not required to settle, but we were required to negotiate in good faith. Due to the limitations imposed by Nevada's open meeting law, two commissioners participated in those settlement conference discussions, lasted approximately a day, and from that, a proposed settlement agreement was reached. That is before the board today. Some of the highlights. There's some, there's some revisions to the VHR ordinance that is in the next item, as an exhibit to the settlement agreement. I'll go over some of the changes that were proposed as part of the settlement. One is that occupancy for a VHR would be increased from two per bedroom to two per bedroom plus two per property. Prior to the VHR regulations, a VHR permit could hold two per bedroom plus four. The plaintiffs wished to return to that. The compromise was two per bedroom plus two. The VHR cap was moved from 600 to 650. The original recommendation of the VHR task. The plaintiffs wanted to return to that number. The compromise was to increase the number of total permits from 600 to 650. As a reminder, the cap only applies to Tier Two and Tier Three permits. Tier One permits, which are called true, true host, the host lives there, are not subject to the cap. Another change, as the board may remember, the judge enjoined the change in the maximum fee of $20,000. The Judge, Judge Jones, kept it at $5,000. Part of the problem the county was facing is that there are people who never intended to try and comply with the VHR regulations, never obtained a VHR, and yet were operating a VHR. The county commissioners felt that a significant penalty was required to deter that misconduct. The $20,000 was imposed, the judge had concerns about that. During the settlement, the parties agreed that $20,000 is appropriate for those individuals who have never had a VHR permit and were operating with, without a VHR permit. In other words, those individuals who never attempted to comply with the VHR regulations would be subject to the maximum $20,000 fine. However, for those individuals who had a permit, but, for instance, let it lapse, they forgot to renew it, their maximum fine would be $5,000. Again, the intent was not to punish those who were trying to comply, but through some mistake failed to do so. And so that, the maximum fine is still $20,000 for those who are not attempting to comply. $5,000 for those who, through some mistake or inadvertence, failed to do so. However, if they do it again, they will be subject to the maximum $20,000 fine. There was a change in who can hold a VHR permit. The board previously had grandfathered in corporations who held VHR permits. They also, the board also agreed to grandfather in those permit holders who would otherwise be not be denied because of the density requirements. It's proposed that corporations now be allowed, corporations and limited liability companies be allowed to hold VHR permits if they're basically closely held companies, basically if it's family-owned. The difficulty is, is that in today's modern world, it's tough to define what a family is, what that means. And so it's defined as persons residing together. As an additional caveat, if a legal entity owns a VHR, possesses a VHR permit, each of the members of that corporate entity, the LLC, or the corporation, agree to personally be liable for compliance with the VHR regulations. The easiest way to explain this is like a bank loan to the corporation. The corporation owns, you know, they have the debt, but the individual members, officers, may sign a personal guarantee for the loan. It's kind of the same type of concept, where the individual members of the corporation agree to be, they agree to abide by the VHR regulations. There was some discussion regarding insurance requirements. There was some concern that there was, it was unclear, or there was too much discretion with the county on what would be acceptable as insurance. That was changed to be more explicit. It's $500,000 general liability insurance for Tier One and Tier Two properties, and a million for Tier Three. And the insurance must be issued by a company with an AM Best rating of at least A-plus, or a Moody's Investor Services rating of at least AA1. It's also required that any insurance must specifically include and cover this kind of commercial activity at a home, whether that's through a rider or an amendment or addendum. The insurance must cover this type of commercial activity in a residential area. One additional change that was made is that individuals like property managers who assist property owners in the illegal operation of a VHR are now subject to these regulations. Before, it was just the property owner. Now, property managers who assist in the violation of the county's regulations are also subject to these penalties, which I think is a good thing. Again, the overarching idea is that the county wants to work with people who are trying to comply with the VHR regulations, and the county is trying to treat those people differently than those people who are trying to not comply with the rules, trying to operate a VHR illegally. And I think this settlement agreement and the proposed changes to the ordinance accomplishes that. I do want to point out that, under the provisions of this agreement, the plaintiffs acknowledge and agree that the Douglas County Commissioners, as elected representatives of the citizens of Douglas County, may make future policy decisions, which may result in amendments to Title 20 of the Douglas County Code, including Chapter 20.622, i.e. the VHR regulations. If the board makes future changes, they have every right to seek redress in court. But again, this board has the right to make future policy decisions. There are two exceptions, though. One is that any county commissioner who votes, who chooses to vote for the settlement agreement, agrees not to make any changes to it until the VHR Advisory Board has had time to collect data and submit findings and recommendations back to this board. Basically, this is a good-faith clause. This board is agreeing to put in place regulations. You will not make any changes until the advisory board, this board is appointed, comes back with some recommendations. The other limitation is that there is an agreement to grandfather in those permit holders who have multiple permits. They will be able to continue to hold their multiple permits through December 31, 2031. That will allow them time to wind up their business. They will, however, be subject to any other rules and regulations that the board may impose, such as fire inspections, the requirement to obtain a special use permit. In other words, if there's other regulations that may be imposed, they are still subject, all permit holders will be subject to those regulations. Again, the general idea was to provide a sufficient deterrent for people who have no intent to comply with the county's regulations, while allowing those who are trying, but for some reason failing, to comply. Give them an opportunity to, to come into compliance. There were some clarifications regarding the appeals process. It's clear that the VHR Advisory Board, that the Board of County Commissioners is appointed, has the ability to modify proposed sanctions based on the facts and circumstances of each case. It's, it was further clarified that if someone is, feels they were not treated fairly, they can come to this board and appeal that decision. And there's always the remedy of a petition for judicial review to the court. I will say that the hope is the settlement agreement will resolve the legal dispute, set a framework for regulations that both the public can understand, the permit holders can understand, and county staff can understand. Going forward, we'll see how the program works. The VHR Advisory Board will collect information regarding what's happening with the rules as they stand, and then they come back with recommendations. I think it's fair to say that most of the commissioners have ideas, good ideas, about further revisions. We've heard from the public. I think there's more things that may need to be done. But the hope is that we will set a framework or foundation from which the VHR Advisory Board can build upon. I will note that this, this settlement agreement and any modifications to the VHR ordinance must occur by no later than January 31 of 2022. And the court has set a preliminary injunction hearing for January 31, 2022, if the parties are unable to finalize the settlement today. And with that, I'm available for questions.
So what we'll do is we'll have questions, concerns from the commissioners. We'll go to public comment and then bring it back. So do we have any comments or questions?
I'm not sure what you, so you're going to have the board talk, then public comment?
If you have any questions of Mr. Ritchie, yes. You will ask those questions now, and then we'll have the public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board, yeah. Yes, yes. Yes, Mr. Ingles?
So after all this happened to me today, will my vote be nullified, or can I still vote?
May I? With your permission. Commissioner Ingles, yes, yes. You, as you know, you were the chairman and participated in the settlement discussions, and no, your vote would not.
Okay, I have another question. And now, after all this happened to me today, is my home going to be confiscated?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
I'm done.
Mr. Ingles, I'm not sure I understand the nature of your question, simply because the Option One included a...
I asked if my vote was going to be nullified.
The answer is no, of course. Mr. Rice, do you have any questions for Mr. Ritchie on this?
Just if we don't pass this today, then I'll bet you're off. We can still be charged with attorney's fees and held responsible for loss of income for those people that were temporarily unable to rent out their properties, and we go back to square one. Is that correct?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie, for the record. That's correct, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Rice. I neglected, although it was in the title. The parties have agreed to pay their own attorney's fees, and the plaintiffs have agreed to not seek any damages. As I recall, their counsel is here, but it's six figures, mid-six figures.
I got a question.
Okay, Ms., let me, Mr. Rice, did you get your, did you, did you get your question answered?
Yes, I did, unfortunately.
Okay, so I'll move on to Mr. Tarkanian.
Mr. Ritchie, in every lawsuit filed against the county, is there a potential that we'd have to pay the legal fees?
Chairman, with your permission. Yeah, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. Yes, Commissioner Tarkanian, that's absolutely correct. There's always the chance of damages in attorney's fees. There would have to be a statutory basis for the award of fees, though.
Another question, please? I got a couple I'm going to ask them. Okay. So basically, if somebody doesn't agree with a policy that we have, they just have to follow lawsuits and threaten legal fees. And if we're worried about paying somebody's legal fees, then we've got to give up, right?
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. If we have a legitimate concern of that the county has exposure, yes, that's something that the board should take into consideration. But I will, let me... But I will, let me preface this by saying that people threaten to sue all the time, and people can sue at any time for any reason, and that doesn't mean they have a winnable case.
And so if we do agree to settle based upon the fear of paying legal fees, doesn't that encourage other people to sue the county if they don't agree with the decision?
Doug Ritchie, again, cases should never be settled because somebody threatens attorney's fees or damages. The county should always examine the merits of the case and ultimately the policy decisions of this board. And that's, I will say this, the plaintiffs recognize that the board, as the elected representatives of the people, have the right to basically change their minds. Based on new information, these things can have, the ordinance can be changed.
But that wasn't the question about changing their mind. We made a vote and voted something. So the question I was trying to get to you because of, it's really based upon the question from Commissioner Rice, who was trying to scare the people that are listening, that, hey, we could be responsible for people's attorney fees if we lose a case. So my question was, that's the case in any lawsuit that's filed against the county. And you rightly so said, if we have a legitimate concern, which I really look forward to discussing in my final comments. But the point is this, is we passed an ordinance that we felt was at a reasonable basis and had policy, it was based on policy. And you're saying now, well, we can come back and change it later based on policy. Well, then what stops them from coming back and suing us because they don't agree with that policy again? The board is the one that creates the policy, not the, not the judge or opposing attorneys, correct?
Doug Ritchie, that's correct, Commissioner Tarkanian. This board is elected representative of the people, and you set policy. You, you should not set policy based on someone's threat of litigation. But that's not the issue here. The issue is, is this in the best interest for the county moving forward?
I, I got to disagree. You're saying it's not, this isn't the issue here, is whether we passed an ordinance that was based upon policy, reasonable basis, as opposed to arbitrary and capricious? Or what's in the best interest of the county because of the threat of a lawsuit by some wealthy individuals? I don't think there was really a question, it was more rhetorical.
Thank you. Mr. Noah Head, did you have comments or questions?
What I'm looking at, going back more than a year, this has been in a thing that is growing and being refined, and we've come up with a set of policy. What we're trying to say, what I'm trying to say right now is, number one and foremost is, let's get a basis established. I've had several calls from my constituents who are offering changes to the existing situation. If we do that, we can't meet the January 31 deadline. We're in trouble. So my, my point is, we should pass this VHR regulation as it is written today. And that's not yet in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
I got a question. Is this a VHR regulation we're passing today or a settlement based upon the lawsuit of the attorneys?
We are on, currently, we are on item eight, which is a settlement agreement only. Item number nine is the second reading of the actual changes and, and possible action on that. So, yes, right currently, we are discussing item number eight, the settlement agreement itself, and then we will come back with item number nine, which would be the second reading of the ordinance that, with the changes that are proposed. Thank you. So are we ready to go to public comment? Commissioners? Okay, let's, let's go to public comment. Are there anybody in chambers who wishes to make public comment regarding item number
Chairman Gardner, Commissioners, my name is Rick Campbell, and as you know, I represent the plaintiffs in this matter. For the two commissioners that were at the settlement conference, you know Judge Baldwin worked very hard to get the party to some middle ground, and that everybody gave up something to get something, and that it was, it was a long, convoluted, day-long procedure. But I, I think there was some progress made. And as Judge Baldwin stressed in the settlement conference, when you reach a settlement like this, you get to decide and the plaintiffs get to decide. We don't have to have Judge Jones decide this matter in a month. So it really gives the parties the opportunity to resolve their dispute and not let Judge Jones do it. The settlement terms and the revised ordinance, I don't think gut the intent of this ordinance and what this board wants to accomplish at all. As the Planning Commission stated in the recommendations to approve the proposed amendments, these amendments, they clarify and strengthen the existing enforcement provisions, and they clarify the appeal process. It still requires adequate public facilities as a condition to permits. It mitigates impact to adjacent properties and does not increase the density or intensity of the affected neighborhoods. That's the Planning Commission that voted 5-0 to approve this settlement because it met the criteria, what they needed to do to look at it. My clients in this case did not seek out to attack this board. They had legitimate concerns, constitutional issues, and they were suffering, going to suffer some significant monetary damages as a result of this. They had some constitutional issues that Judge Jones agreed with. The tenants are not rich people that are trying to influence this board or bully this board whatsoever. They are people who have invested in this community. Some of them live here. A lot of them are retired or are working. They pay their property taxes. They help the economy of this community by bringing people in that do this. And most overall, they're, they are interested in the putting the bad apples in the VHR business out of business. They don't want that. It doesn't behoove them to have bad apples and put a bad name on this business. And they're not just alone. We've had over 100 people comment to my clients that they're in support of this, and many of those have supported with financial help to get, to help through this litigation. All the owners and my clients want the county to regulate the bad apples in this thing. And I agree, I would urge the board to, for the unanimous vote, to follow the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission to approve this settlement. It goes a long way, and I commend Doug Ritchie for his effective advocacy in this thing. He had, he's very professional in this, and he is a strong representative for the county, and he's looking out for the county's interest. And I think this settlement is in the county's interest at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further public comment in chambers?
Virginia Stera, I just, I had a question because I was trying to figure out from DA, Doug Ritchie's presentation of the sort of short Reader's Digest version of the settlement, what it actually contained. And I became a bit confused when he talked about the good faith clause, because the way he expressed it had something to do with if, if commissioners who voted no were making an agreement to do something. And that confused me, that commissioners that were voting no were actually agreeing positively to, to something else. And I would, I would like to hear that clarified a little bit because I just wasn't sure how that played out in the overall settlement. Thank you.
I wrote it once. Do I need to write it again?
Mr. Ritchie, would you like to restate that, address that question? I, I, well, no, we're not done with public comment yet, so I don't know that we are. So, yeah, you can hold on. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment in chambers?
Yeah, my name is Stephen Shiner, and I live at the Tahoe Beach Club and the community there and the majority, all bought in for a private community. And, you know, when you start talking about 10 years to wind up a business of, I mean, who is given 10 years to wind anything up in this world? But I'm just saying, that's insanity. But we're also going up in the number of permits from where we were prior to this whole thing, which is, what are we doing? It's just so disappointing to understand that we got a gun to our head and we're just going, okay, we're out. We don't want to, we don't want to fight this. So it looks to me like we're going completely backwards to square one, and it doesn't look like a settlement. It looks like we're just giving in. So the original intent of this whole thing was to preserve the counties, the lake, and families. And now we're giving in to all these vacation home rentals that do not support the community. Yes, they pay taxes, but they don't put people in schools. And from what I can see, the economy of the area is doing extremely well. So when you talk about we need to bring more people in, we need to bring more people in, I was on Kingsbury Grade the other day for two and a half hours to go five miles. So let's just keep bringing people in. We need more people. So not buying into that. People that have more than one permit are usually corporations, and not only are we going to allow them, but we're going to give them a 10-year run on it. So tier three going to 12, I'm just confused on two per bedroom plus two. Does that mean on tier two, you can go to 12, or you can go to, if you have six bedrooms, you can go to 24? Is it capped at two on tier, capped at 12 on tier two? The 10 was a much better number. I think we all agreed on that. The bad apples, for the most part, are not the people that are renting. It's the people they don't know that come here. The hours that you guys all spent on this to get to where we were is criminal to go backwards. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any additional public comment in chambers? Marsha, is there anybody online? Oops, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Commissioners, my name is Paul Bruno. I am a permanent resident of State Line. I've addressed this group before on this very same issue. Thankfully, and I'll bet mercifully, I am not going to go over the last four years of testimony that you have all enjoyed hearing about VHRs, and instead merely say that of all the testimony that you have heard, the first ordinance that was passed has not only a rational basis, but substantial evidence collected over a period of years in the contemplative body that this is and the decisions that were made. My position is I do not believe that the settlement is appropriate. We've talked about, well, my background is, I was the chairman of the Planning Commission of a small town called Los Gatos in Santa Clara County. In an earlier life in the 1980s, I was council for Santa Clara County, not within, but outside council. I'm familiar with lawsuits. This, to me, is a bullying lawsuit to try to gain rapacious return with respect to VHRs. The VHR holders, I think grandfathered is a great idea. That's a good idea from this whole exercise. But five years is plenty of time. You need not have 10 years to, to just, to get the ordinance square. Two per bedroom plus two, I think, is a retreat that's unnecessary because it causes things such as parking. The parking is compounded by adding the extra two, and that was one of the major complaints of all the folks and cul-de-sacs, et cetera, your constituents. Tier three over 12 occupants should go back to 10 because the protections are necessary, at least in my opinion, with respect to the entire community. We are trying to preserve a community in this area. There's two ideas I have that I'd like to put forward. First, we're in federal court. If the commission is inclined to go forward with this settlement, then I believe in federal court, the declaratory relief can be modeled such that you have the judge declare that all aspects of this ordinance, after his read, are in fact absolutely legal and appropriate and constitutional. Then you're buying something. You're buying something for this settlement. And the other suggestion I have is that you just take a bit more time. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? I apologize.
Thank you. Now, are there any other public comment in chambers? If not, we'll go to the online zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are multiple people with their hand raised. I'll start with the caller first. Caller that ends in 7102, do you have public comment on item number eight?
I do not have comment at this time. Thank you.
Beth, do you have public comment on item number eight?
Hello, this is Ben Harmon from State Line, Nevada, for the record. Are you able to hear me?
We are. Thank you very much. We're going to start your time now.
As a member of the public with no legal background, I'd like to provide the board with what I believe the public perception of the outcome of accepting these terms of settlement could be. Mr. Tarkanian's observation regarding legal things being a deterrent to the implementation of public will rings very true. I believe the board did a great job in passing regulations that reflected the public will in reining in the negative impacts of VHRs on the residents of Douglas County. This legal challenge appears to me to be an attempt on the part of commercial interests to subvert that will. This is not necessarily fully true for all items in the settlement. I believe item number one to be generally fair. Those that have existed VHRs should have some consideration. This takes into consideration the effects of the regulations on particular individuals, which I think is a key thing to consider. Though I do agree with the previous speaker, Mr. Bruno, that five years seems adequate. Item number two, on the other hand, undermines one of the most critical elements of the regulations, to reduce the excessive numbers of VHR occupants. I do not see how such a specific number of occupants is magically subject to legal challenge. How is a number like that a constitutional right? Frankly, I don't buy it. Item number three is particularly problematic. This is one of the most critical components of the new VHR regulations. It's completely unclear to me how restricting the number of available VHRs violates any particular individual's constitutional rights. I think it will be extremely difficult for the public to accept this as being anything except what other speakers have referred to as a capitulation to strong-arm tactics. Item number five seems suspicious to me. Again, I'm not a legal person, it just smells weird. I previously expressed to this board that the core problem with VHRs is that they are commercial enterprises operating in residential zone areas. The language of this item seems overly broad to me and opens the door for overtly commercial enterprises to continue to operate. I don't have any other comments on the other items. I just want to say to the board, I know this is a really tough issue for you. I very much appreciate all that you've done in this matter in the past, and as a member of the public, I would certainly support you to stand on my ability to continue to stick to your guns with the regulations that you passed initially that do reflect the public will, and that's what we put you in office for. So again, thank you, and that's it for me.
Any additional?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have another caller I'm going to check with first. Caller that ends in 7447, do you have public comment on item number eight?
Yes, my name is Kurt Brown. I'm a resident in Elk Point. I think the board has an obligation to sustain what it voted for in the first place, and I think the DA has an obligation to defend what the board passed. I think special interests, who most of them are not residents and do not vote here, like I am, who vote here and- like I am, who vote here and pay the same taxes as they do. That's all the comment I have, and thank you.
Okay, proceed.
Timothy, do you have public comment on item number eight?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Sure. For the record, my name is Tim Barabee, and I live in State Line as well. And the first thing I would like to say is that Mr. Olivieri said it best. We've had two commissioners, and Mr. Ritchie and the attorney, discuss a settlement without involving the residents of Douglas County. The residents of Douglas County have been clear. We oppose any compromises here. We are clear. We vote. We live here. So I would like the commissioners to pay attention to the people who live here and vote for them. Also, the VHR owners, for the most part, I believe, I don't know this for a fact, but the plaintiffs probably all have multiple VHR permits. So these people are strong-arming us. And we're, quite frankly, we're weak. Us, we, the residents, would more than willingly do, you know, support you, Mr. Ritchie. I'll write you a check to help fight the VHR lawyers. By the way, they have been soliciting money through mass emails, just so that you know. And they can also rent their units out on a monthly basis. They could rent their units out annually. They could help the community by actually having their residents be available to people who support our community. So I don't buy it. I don't like it. I especially don't like the 10 years. But please stay strong, commissioners. You did a great job. And let's just please stay strong. That's it.
There's still public comment?
I understand. I just need a question, please.
Okay.
Can you tell me that gentleman's name?
Tim Barabee.
Tim Barabee. Thank you.
Two more.
Kathy, do you have public comment on item number eight?
I do.
Please state your name, and we'll start your time.
My name is Kathy Oyster, and I live at Elk Point Country Club. I could review everything that's been said ahead of me by Mr. Barabee, Brown, Harmon, Bruno, and Shiner, but I am in complete agreement with them. So I'm going to use my time to tell you a story because I have an apartment building in the Tahoe Basin, and I refuse to rent it out short term. And I can tell you that the members of the community, some have broken into tears because I won't rent to the highest bidder, but really to the longest-term renter, to the person who is serving you coffee, trimming your dog, taking care of you. Keep in mind, and I absolutely appreciate the four years, you gentlemen, and anyone who has served on the committees and staff to create an excellent policy that you created. Stand up. Be counted. Know you are supported, and we will continue to vote for you when you stand up for us and the other people within the community. Please. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson for the record. I do have one other caller that checked in. Caller that ends in 4415, do you have public comment on item number eight?
Can I speak now?
Do you have public comment on item number eight?
I do, yes.
Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
My name is Bradley Onetto. I live at Elk's Point as well. And I appreciate the time to address the commissioners. I built a house in that neighborhood about five, six years ago. And I don't remember forming a contract or being in business with my neighbors who are renting their property. Yet I have had vehicles parked in my driveway, garbage thrown in my garbage can, and so on and so forth. I love the Tahoe Basin. I enjoy living there. Stayed my full-time residence. I think the commissioners have, you know, proposed a good law or regulation. And I think that they should stick to it. I think they should start thinking about the long-term residents who live in the area rather than the people who are using it for an income stream. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. We'll take it. Bring it back to the board for further comment, questions, and a possible motion. Mr. Ingles.
I'm the commissioner that brought forward the moratorium because I am of the persuasion that these VHRs are a scourge on our community. The city of Santa Monica in California allows no VHRs. We've gone round and round and tried to be equitable, and these people don't even want to do that. What I would suggest that we do, and I'm going to vote, you know, against accepting this. The folks up there, what you can do is, we've got an election coming up this year. Get together, do a referendum to eliminate all VHRs in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Mr. Rice, you have additional questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Having spent the whole day along with Commissioner Ingles trying to resolve this problem, one of the reasons why I was in favor of it is because we didn't cave on anything, in my opinion. What we did was agree to what had come out from the VHR task force as the recommendations to begin with. They had recommended 725, I believe, permits. We were able to bring it to 625, if my memory serves. In my opinion, Commissioner Ingles and I did what we could to get the best deal and to get this thing to where we can finally have some teeth in it, where we can finally approve and get all of these regulations passed. We've been kicking this can around for at least two years that I'm aware of. And I just wanted to see something resolved. And we have not resolved it yet, and it doesn't look like we're ever going to resolve it now. So I just wonder, how long are we going to kick this can down the road before we actually approve something that'll have some teeth in it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Tarkanian?
Thank you. I'd like to respond first to a couple of things that Wes said. Wes, we did respond, and we did make a decision in July. We passed an amended ordinance that was voted on, God, I think it was 6-0 by the board, if I'm not mistaken. 5-5-0, yeah, I can't, I thought we had the sheriff with us. Okay. So we did do this. The only reason why we're here today is because nine wealthy VHR owners hired a high-powered attorney to come and threaten Douglas County with this lawsuit. The VHR, I'm not aware of the VHR task force recommending that one person could hold five VHRs for 10 years. And you see, that's really egregious to me. Well, we're going to limit VHRs in the county to a certain number. But all of a sudden, we're going to say, because one guy had enough money to hire a high-powered attorney, he's going to keep five of them for 10 years? That just doesn't seem right to me. Doesn't seem equitable. And it seems like it's a complete dereliction of the county's commissioners' duty. I would love to have been a part of that negotiation. Being the only attorney on this board, I would love to have sat in on those negotiations and could have made my opinions felt at that time because there is a certain, well, let me take it back for a second. I want to clarify a couple of quick things that Mr. Campbell, the attorney for the plaintiff, said. He said that the planning commission said that these changes did not increase the density. Now, I'm not sure if the planning commission said that or not, but I do know that that's not true. It increases the number of permits, which increases the density. It increases the number of people that can stay in the home from two per bedroom to an additional two. That increases the density. It increases Tier Two to up to 12 people instead of 10 people. That increases the density. So these changes do increase the density. Second of all, he was a little sly with the way he was saying how these VHR owners or residents of Douglas County, he didn't say all of them, but he inferred like they were, and they were all taxpayers. It's my understanding, almost half of them don't live in Douglas County, and that this is their investment. So anyways, going back to why I would like to have been on the commission, I mean, on the negotiations for this settlement is because, as an attorney, I understand the legal standard that has to be applied in these type of cases. And so I really want to start this off by saying to the board, I am confident this is the most important decision this board is going to make this year, and it may be the most important decision that is made in the next decade. And I don't say that because of what it does with this one issue, the VHR issue. It's because of the precedent we're going to set by allowing nine individuals who have enough money to hire a high-powered attorney to go to federal court in Las Vegas and threaten this board when they don't have the legal standard to overturn this. The, I think, Doug, you said, if we had a reasonable concern or a legitimate concern is what you said. If they can't prove there's a legitimate concern with what we pass, they lose. That's the standard. This decision today, if we give in to these nine individuals, is going to open the floodgates for future lawsuits across the board. The Board of County Commissioners were elected by the residents of Douglas County to make policies that, in their judgment, is in the best interest of the residents of Douglas County. One argument I have heard to approve this settlement is that a federal judge will make this VHR decision for the board if we don't agree to the settlement. That is not true because there is a standard that the judge has to follow. Judges, whether they're federal or state, do not have the legal authority to make policy decisions. The only legal authority judges have over the county commission is to ensure its decisions are not arbitrary and capricious, or in other words, they must be reasonably based upon fact. That is the only thing this federal judge can do. Now, I've had many discussions with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office concerning the VHR ordinance, and not once, not once has any attorney indicated to me that the policies that we adopted in July were arbitrary and capricious. Not once. As I mentioned, I'm the only attorney on this board, and I am confident that the policies we approved are reasonable and were based upon fact and are not arbitrary and capricious. Furthermore, you don't need a law degree to determine if a policy is reasonable or not. Is it unreasonable to restrict the occupancy to two people per bedroom? Isn't it the bedrooms where people sleep in? Is it only reasonable if we allow two additional people to sleep on the couch, the floor, for that to be reasonable? Of course not. You guys all know that. And that's what they want us to overturn. And that's, the standard that they can get this overturned has to show we are doing something unreasonably. It's arbitrary and capricious. That's not arbitrary and capricious, but it's part of this settlement. This lawsuit was initiated by nine wealthy businessmen who own, and this is why I wanted Tim Barberi's names, because Tim was right on the money. This lawsuit was initiated by nine wealthy business owners who own multiple VHR homes. And when they own these multiple homes, they're making millions of dollars. One of the plaintiffs testified that he owns five homes, and just one of them earns him $750,000 annually. These plaintiffs didn't file this lawsuit because the amendments the board passed were arbitrary and capricious. No, they filed this lawsuit to protect their business investment, their business income, period. There is no better example of this than the fact that they are willing to settle this case if the board agrees to allow them to keep their VHRs for a minimum of 10 years. They need 10 years to take care of their business? I am willing to bet that they would have settled this case with no other changes to the VHR ordinance if we just would have accepted the fact they can keep multiple VHRs because that's where they're making the money. This is important for each commissioner and the public to be aware of what this settlement does. This is very important. This settlement states that any commissioner who votes for this settlement is prohibited from voting to restrict VHR permits to one per person for 10 years. You cannot come back later and change that vote. That's what this settlement says if you vote yes today. If this motion passes, the only way this board can limit VHR permits to one per person is if one of the county commissioners who voted for this settlement is no longer part of this board. Hell of a deal they're proposing, isn't it? Now, let's remember what we are dealing with here, okay? We all understand what's going on here. We have residential neighborhoods where families live or have a vacation home. The zoning is residential. Business operations are prohibited. Many VHR owners argue, hey, this isn't a business. This is my second home. It's a vacation home. And they're only utilizing their property rights by renting out their vacation home when they are not there. Okay? Now, look, I have concerns for VHRs. But that's an argument that you can make and say, okay. There may be some soundness to it. But that is not what the plaintiffs have here. This isn't a second home for them. This isn't a vacation home. They own multiple VHR permits that earn them a great profit. This is a business. If the board agrees to this settlement, they are sanctioning a business operation in residential neighborhoods. You can't paint this any other way. This is a business operation when you're owing multiple permits. The biggest problem with agreeing to this settlement is a precedent it will set. If the board agrees to this settlement, it is telling everyone, including rich investors outside the county, that if you file a lawsuit against the Board of County Commissioners, they will settle, even though the policy the board passed was reasonable and in the best interest of the county. Many decisions made by this board upsets or adversely affects a group of people. Before I was on this board, there were two such decisions. Mola Parkway and the Event Center. Does this board want to indicate to those people who were upset by those two projects that all they needed to do was file a lawsuit, and we would have gave up and reversed our decision? Is that the precedent we want to set? One of the arguments I have heard in support of agreeing to the settlement is the cost, well, wait, no, I'm sorry. I wrote this out, and I missed a part that I added. Let's go back to the legal standard, okay? Let's go back to the legal standard. Is it arbitrary and capricious to deny an individual the right to operate a rental business in a residential zone? Is it arbitrary and capricious to do that? I would argue it's arbitrary and capricious to allow someone to do that. One of the arguments I've heard in support of agreeing to this settlement is the cost and time to the county's legal staff. No one wants the county attorneys to waste time on basis lawsuits. But if we don't fight back and we are legally correct, it will only encourage more of these lawsuits and cost more of our time with our county attorneys. The board must show that it will not be bullied by nine individuals who want to protect their business interests, not their property rights, their business interests located in residential neighborhoods. And I want to thank Tim Barberi for his comment because, and the comments from some of the other people. But this is about the will of the people. I have sat on this board for one year now. I think this is my one-year anniversary. And over and over again, I keep hearing members of this board say, "I'm going to vote because of, by the will of the people. I'm going to vote by what they want." There is no doubt, there is no indication that the will of the people want us to settle with these individuals and allow more VHRs, give in to these powerful people, and tie our hands for being able to vote on policy decisions that we think are in the best interest of the county. For that reason, I am an absolute no on this settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Tarkanian. Mr. Noah Sad, do you have any comment?
What's your position on this again?
Almost as powerful and strong as you were a few minutes ago.
Thank you. Mr. Noah Sad, do you have any other further comments or questions? Okay. So anyways, as I reviewed this settlement agreement, and I expressed displeasure with it when I first it when I first heard of it because of all of the adjustments to the ordinance that were required to put this settlement in place. But my biggest issue here is on the settlement agreement, and I don't know whether my federal commissioners will agree with me on that, but item number D on the settlement agreement, it specifically says, "The county commissioners who personally vote to approve this agreement do so in good faith and will not propose any changes to the Chapter 20.622 of the Douglas County Code until the VHR Advisory Board submits its findings or recommendations to the Board for consideration." There's no timetable on that, and I don't believe the voters of this county voted to have us, the legislative body of this county, to cede our legislative responsibilities to a group of people other than the Board of Commissioners. For that reason, I have a problem with this settlement agreement, and I did express this to counsel, as you know. I have a problem with ceding it until the VHR Advisory Board submits its findings. I don't know if that's going to be three months. I don't know if that's going to be six months. I don't know if that's going to be a year. So, I can't cede my legislative responsibilities on behalf of the citizens of this county who voted to elect me. So, that's my chief concern. I'm the one that proposed the 600 versus the 650. I am troubled by that. There's a lot of other things that I'm troubled with, including the increase in the occupancy But that's my chief concern right there, is ceding our legislative authority, gentlemen. I don't know that I'm interested in doing that. So, those are my comments. Do we have any? No. So, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before the motion, I have a comment.
Proceed, Mr. Rice. Sure.
Danny, I'd hate to admit it, but darn good argument. I think you swayed me. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Ingalls, proceed, please.
I'd make a motion not to adopt ordinance 2021-1591.
Mr. Ingalls, that is out of order. We're not on that particular item just yet. We're on the settlement agreement, the VHR federal lawsuit. I'm sorry.
I move that we do not adopt.
Microphone on. Mr. Ingalls, could you put your microphone on so we can get that into the record?
I move that we do not adopt the settlement lawsuit.
I second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Ingalls, seconded by Mr. Noah Sad to deny the settlement agreement, federal lawsuit in regards to the VHR ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no other discussion, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the motion to deny the federal lawsuit or deny the settlement agreement signify by saying aye.
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 And I don't think I heard any no's. So, the motion passes to deny the settlement agreement, five to zero. Thank you. We'll move on to number nine, the second reading, ordinance 2021-1591, amending the VHR ordinance for possible action. Discussion on the possible adoption of ordinance 2021-1591 and ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 20-622 of the Douglas County Code, including the setting of occupancy limits, allowing vacation home rental permits to be issued to closely-held corporate entities grandfathering in existing multiple VHR permit holders through December 31, 2031, subject to the conditions and terms of renewal, clarifying the liability insurance that must be held by VHR permit holders, increasing the length of the term of the VHR Advisory Board members from two years to four years, imposing liability for persons who assist in the leasing of VHRs without a valid VHR permit, increasing the number, the maximum number of VHR permits from 600 to 650, modifying the fine structure, increasing the time in which a notice of appeal must be filed from 10 days to 14 days of the date the first notice of violation was mailed, and other related amendments clarifying the intent of the VHR regulations. This is the second reading. Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman Gardner. This is Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. This is the second reading, as indicated, for possible amendments to the VHR ordinance. It includes provisions that were incorporated in the settlement agreement that was just rejected by the board. It also includes some other items, some cleanup items. It gives additional time for appellants to file an appeal of an adverse decision. It gives additional time to staff to notify an appellant of a decision by the VHR Advisory Includes some of the language regarding the -- clarifying the penalties regarding $5,000 for those who were, had a permit, but for some reason didn't let it expire versus those who never had a permit and were renting a VHR. That was restored to the $20,000. It included a change to the VHR Advisory Board, increasing the term from two to four years. I think that was an oversight. The intent was to have staggering terms for the VHR Advisory Board. Again, as indicated, it gives 14 days for someone to -- for the staff to provide notice to an appellant of a decision. I guess it's -- sorry, it's 10 business days versus 14 calendar days. There's some other items in here. The planning commission voted unanimously in favor of the proposed changes. The VHR Advisory Board also heard the proposed changes. I believe the intent was to adopt this and then for the VHR Advisory Board to see how the program worked as revised and then come back to this board with future recommended suggestion -- future recommended changes.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ritchie, I do have a question. Since most of these provisions were in the settlement agreement that we just denied, I don't know how we can go forward with a possible motion to accept these things when we didn't accept the settlement agreement. So, I'm a bit confused in that regard.
If I may, Chairman. These are separate items, separate issues. The board rejected the settlement agreement. It does not preclude this board from accepting this, or more likely, based on the feedback that's been received, provide further direction to staff on further changes. Again, there are changes in here that are not directly tied to the settlement, some cleanup issues, issues that are good just procedurally for staff.
Well, you know, I understand the makeup of the VHR Advisory Board from two to four years. I mean, I understand that was an oversight, but I think that probably is something that we could clean up at a later date. It's not necessary to change the entire ordinance as it is stated right now, but I will cede to the wishes of my fellow commissioners also. Mr. Noah Sad, it looks like you had a question.
No, I don't have a question. I got a statement. Given the eloquent presentation by Mr. Tarkanian and the strong opposition by Commissioner Ingalls and the denial of the federal lawsuit acceptance of that, I am going to vote no. I'm going to vote not to adopt ordinance 2021-1591.
So, I guess I need to ask legal counsel a question here. In light of this development, my question is, because it's a possible action, we indicated that we would accept public comment on possible action items. Would it be possible, is it within the realm of us withdrawing this item from the agenda for further discussion at a later date, avoiding all of that?
Mr. Chairman, I would be opposed to that because -- and we should back it up by refusing mine.
Very good. Okay. I appreciate that, and so we'll move forward. We'll move forward to public comment on this. I know that -- I will make an observation that most of the individuals who spoke in opposition to item number eight stated many of the opposition items that were in item number nine. So, I would ask that perhaps if you want to come forward and make public comment on number nine, you would make those comments different from what you indicated earlier on item eight. Do we have any new pertinent information to assess from the public in item number nine? I sense people are going to get up. So, anyways, we'll go into public comment at this time then, and after public comment from chambers, we'll go to public comment from the Zoom and then bring it back to the board again. Thank you.
James McCall, I think once you deny the settlement agreement, you would, at least at the very minimum, you would have to turn this down and bring it back because of the aspects of it that were based on the settlement agreement. So, I would recommend that you would vote no on this now and then bring it back at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Mr. Bruno?
Paul Bruno, resident of State Line. I understand the previous vote, and it was a very good, rational, and well-discussed vote. I just want to point out to the commissioners that there are some items in this ordinance that probably should be sent back for revision that have fairness to them, like notice dates and also the assistance that it would give staff with respect to processing, and those are worthy of review. I want to say one further item is that if, at a later date, there ever is a settlement that is contemplated with this particular group of plaintiffs, that we try to get some type of declaratory relief order in, because then it would preclude some, and Commissioner Tarkanian put it right on the head, we -- the extent that it ever is settled. The other way of finality is winning the lawsuit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Any other additional comments in chambers? Then we will, at this time, go to online comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson for the record. We do have a few callers online. I'll check with them first. Caller ending in 7102, do you have public comment on item number nine? Caller ending in 7447, do you have public comment on item number nine? Okay, I do have one person with their hand raised. Keegan, do you have public comment on item number nine?
Hi there. Yep. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please state your name, and we'll start your time.
Great. Keegan Wetzel. Thank you all for the hearing today. It's been great to get to listen in, to gain some of the insight that's garnered by this board. I would say that the comments put out by the commissioners' email, either yesterday or earlier today, Mr. Tarkanian, were very subjective in the opinion of the public, that the settlement and the lawsuit is not a group of wealthy individuals, but a group of working-class individuals that are looking to benefit their community, benefit the schools, roads, police of Douglas County, and also that number nine, the second reading here, does contain many items that overlap with number eight, but those individual items, I think, can be addressed and potentially avoid having to go to court over the settlement. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have another caller that joined the conference again. Caller 7102, do you have public comment on item number nine?
Hi, I just disconnected myself by accident. Susan Hinchman dialing back in. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And then caller ending in 7447, do you have public comment on item number nine? No response and no further public comment at this time.
Thank you. Then we'll close public comment at this time, and we will move to closing public comment. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. No, we did not vote on that. We did not. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion in regards to the ordinance 2021-1591.
Mr. Chair, I move that we refuse the adoption of ordinance 2021-1591.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian, to deny the approval of ordinance 2021-1591. Any additional comments? Then we'll go to the vote. All those commissioners in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Now, we will move to closing public comment. I appreciate you catching that, Mr. Tarkanian. So, we'll go to closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. Do we have any public comment in chambers? Seeing no public comment in chambers, do we have any online public comment, closing public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson for the record. If you would like to provide closing public comment, please raise your hand now. I do have one caller I will check with. Caller ending in 7102, do you have closing public comment?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With the end of closing public comment, this meeting is hereby adjourned at 5:07, it looks like. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. at 5:07, it looks like. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.